Good evening, everyone. I'm Kate Ford, President of the Board, and it is 6:39. We've concluded closed session of the Board, and I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District School Board. And now for information about interpretation for this meeting.
Thank you, Board President Ford. This evening, we will have interpretation into both English and Spanish, and we are also offering American Sign Language. So I will give this announcement in both English and Spanish. In order to provide language access, we will be providing simultaneous bidirectional interpretation in English and Spanish. If you are bilingual, you do not have to click on anything. If you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, you will have to select your language in order to hear the interpretation. If you are on a laptop or desktop, at the bottom right of your screen, you will see a globe icon that says "Interpretation." Please click on the globe now and select "English." If you are on an iPad or a phone, locate the three-dot menu and select "Language Interpretation." Then select "English" and click "Done." When it's your turn to speak, please remember to be loud and clear. And we are offering American Sign Language interpretation for this meeting. If you will be using ASL interpretation, please use the Zoom app on your computer, tablet, or phone to join this meeting. If you join this meeting through your web browser, you may not be able to see the ASL interpreter at all times. Esta reunión contará con interpretación simultánea bidireccional en inglés y en español. Si usted es bilingüe, no tiene que presionar nada. Si usted no es bilingüe, tendrá que elegir su idioma para escuchar la interpretación. Si está usando una computadora, verá un icono en la parte inferior de su pantalla a la derecha en forma de globo que dice "Interpretación." Haga clic ahí ahora y seleccione "Español." Si está usando un iPad o su teléfono, localice el menú de tres puntos, haga clic en "Interpretación de idiomas," elija "Español," y aceptar. Cuando sea su turno de hablar, por favor recuerde hablar con voz fuerte y clara. Gracias. Thank you. We may now begin the interpretation and the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Superintendent Maldonado to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Ford. Mr. Rouse, will you please show our flag? Everybody, right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Maldonado, will you please continue with your report?
Thank you very much. And I will be brief with my reports since we have a lot of items in our agenda today. I know that one of the main questions we've been getting today is why we want to reopen now. I just want to make sure that I let board members and the public know that we know that the vaccine is within reach of our teachers in the next coming days and weeks. And this will create a greater sense of safety for many of our teachers, and they deserve to have it as soon as possible. With this vaccine, we will be able to continue to ensure the safety, the much-needed supports. And we know that, as we noticed our teachers today, that we may be able to be approved to reopen within about 10 working days. This can be occurring in a parallel way. So we will continue to advocate for the benefit of our teachers to get that vaccination as they choose to do so. Even though we are asking for vaccination, we know that some people may choose not to do so, and we cannot use that as a condition of employment. So I want to make sure that we're clear about that as well. Another reason is that the students need us. I have heard from many parents, including one of my children, who are having difficulty with not being in school for many reasons—social, emotional, academic, and so forth. And I think that it is one of our main priorities. It is a mission critical of this organization, and we want to make sure we honor that. We also know that the health and safety protocols are ready and in place. We expect that even with staff being vaccinated, everyone is going to continue to follow health and safety protocols, wearing masks, practicing social distancing, avoiding large gatherings, and maintaining healthy hygiene habits. We want to encourage staff and students, who also may be experiencing any symptoms related to COVID, to please stay home, monitor their condition, and seek medical help before coming to school. All these things will continue to happen, even when we reopen in a couple of weeks. Lastly, our parents can expect to receive a note tomorrow to choose whether or not they will continue with their choice from the fall to stay in distance learning or to now come into the in-person hybrid instruction models. Our principals have begun some informational webinars, and they will continue to have those happening. Because of the ability to choose these models, we know some teachers will be teaching remotely, while others will be teaching in person. And we have plans in place for any staff or teachers who have expressed the need to take a leave of absence as well and feel that we are fully staffed and ready to go. I know that you'll also be hearing tonight about learning recovery plans. You will learn more about how we plan to recover learning time for our students. And in the coming weeks, we'll be working with administrators and teachers to get their input and feedback on the best way to recapture any incurred academic deficits and, at the same time, provide much-needed connections to school and friends for our students. I want to close with recognizing our amazing Food Services Director, Matt Ditman, who personally delivered meals during his lunch break while coordinating with our COVID Task Force member to families who were in quarantine and couldn't go out and get meals. Matt Ditman is an exemplar employee and really shows the heart of our organization. And through his actions, we know that is the best way that Santa Barbara Unified Staff and Employees can be represented. We have a note to show everyone here from the students, Mr. Rouse, with expressions of gratitude for the meals. And we think this note says it all. I think we'll have it up. If not, I may have to show it to you a little later. But the note is thanking us for delivering meals, again, while families were in quarantine. And we know that that is why we exist, why public education is such an important part of our democracy and our society. We are here to serve, and we do it best in person. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that we also now know how to deliver learning in a 21st-century classroom. Thank you, and that concludes my comments.
Oh, thank you so much, Superintendent Maldonado. It has been quite an intense couple of weeks that we've had since the last Board meeting, most notably the start of the impeachment trial today and, over the past two weeks, the ever-changing landscape of our state's response to COVID-19. I feel compelled again to start our Board meeting with comments, my comments, with the words of Amanda Gorman in her poem, which was spoken on Sunday evening at the Super Bowl, where she paid tribute to the honorary captains representing healthcare workers, teachers, and our military veterans. She began with these words: "A time of uncertainty and need, they've taken the lead, exceeding all expectations and limitations, uplifting their communities and neighbors as leaders, healers, and educators." And she concluded with, "We celebrate them by acting with courage and compassion, by doing what is right and just. For while we honor them today, it is they who every day honor us." And now we'll continue with other Board comments and correspondence from my sister Board members. Ms. Munoz, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you, President Ford, and good evening, everyone. It's great to see all the, at this point, 434 participants. I would like to share about, you know, participating in the College and Career Readiness Night along with President Ford and Superintendent Maldonado. I appreciated the second presentation on this, the excellent enthusiasm and information shared by Edith Cortez, the counselor at Santa Barbara High School, along with Cuca Acosta, a UCSB counselor, who is just fabulous in terms of making college a reality for our students and very approachable. The video of the student was excellent and as well as the participation of Maria Sarate, the co-presidenta of DLEC. So thank you so much for, Ms. Larios Horton, for organizing this. It was—I feel like, you know, we had good parent participation at both nights. I also very much enjoyed the walkthrough of La Cumbre Junior High as we prepare for going back to hybrid school. And La Cumbre Junior High Principal Bradley Brock and Superintendent Maldonado, along with my sister Board member, Ms. Alvarez, enjoyed meeting with the teachers, talking to them, and just seeing how we're getting that campus prepared to go back to hybrid school when we're able to. I'd like to make an announcement about, speaking of COVID-19, a town hall that's going to be held this Thursday night, virtual town hall, Thursday, February 11th, from 6:00 to 7:00. It will have the participation of Dr. Vander De Reynoso, Dr. Ansorg, and Paige Batson from Public Health. And it will be very available for our parents and community. It is available via Zoom, and it also has a toll-free number that can be called in. It will be English, in Spanish, and Misteco. And I believe we will have that information available to our families. Thank you. I don't know if—Superintendent Maldonado, I don't know if you are able to add something to that in terms of—to—sorry, how we're able to share that information?
We will—Ms. Barnwell will send it out to everyone.
Is that it, Ms. Munoz? Thank you so much. Ms. Capps, do you have any correspondence or comments?
My comments, I will save for the COVID report because they are all about vaccines and the next moves here in the interest of time. But just, again, I would like to express gratitude for the correspondence that we receive. It's intense, heartfelt, very diametrically varied opinions about what to do. But I just, again, all those—the effort is so well-appreciated. The videos that have been sent, the phone calls I've had with both parents and teachers these last two weeks are appreciated. And just to echo the appreciation of Matt Ditman and the food service workers to provide meals to those who are quarantined. I have—one of my closest friends in town was quarantined with her son, who has COVID, this last week. And I just experienced the stress of trying to get, you know, get food into the house and was able to participate in a small way. So it brought it home, at least closer to home for me. And I just am so grateful that our team would do that. Not at all surprised, but very grateful. Thank you.
Fantastic. And Ms. Alvarez, do you have any comments or correspondence?
Well, yes. First of all, thank you to everyone who takes the time to write to us, to call us, to send us videos. I also had a lot of—the pleasure to speak with several community members, teachers, parents, so thank you for doing that. And also, I like to express my gratitude to the principals, to the staff. I had the great honor to accompany Ms. Maldonado and her team visiting several sites past weeks. We went to Autumn's, to Harding, to Roosevelt, to La Cumbre Junior High, and spoke with the teachers, talking about how we are going to be back in person and how we can help. So thank you to the teachers, thank you to the principals, and thank you to admin for all the work that's been done. And that's all the comments I have for now.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. And I have a few to share with you also. First of all, tonight, as we continue with our Board meeting and numerous topics where, as Ms. Capps mentioned, there are diverse opinions, very diverse opinions in our community, I must ask all of us to remember that this is a meeting of the School Board, which is held in public. It's not a public meeting, and therefore, all comments and questions must be directed to the Board and not to individuals, to individual employees, or to members of the public. I must further ask and reinforce that all comments be guided by respect, civility, and tolerance. And above all, please remember that we are all role models for our young people. Hate speech will not be tolerated. Language that is disparaging, dismissive, and full of animosity is completely inappropriate here. And I thank you in advance for understanding and respecting my request. And now on to a very happy announcement about two retirements of certificated personnel. First of all, retiring effective 6/4 in June is Paul Cronshaw. He has been a teacher at La Cuesta Continuation, and he's been with our district for over 24 years. And also retiring is Christina Nelson. She is a speech and language pathologist in special education. And sure, her retirement was effective on January 15th, after 19-plus years of service to our district. So we thank these wonderful employees. And we just wish you wonderful times to rest and relax and follow new interests and hobbies, hopefully. And finally, I just wanted to mention that many of you know by now that Ms. Maldonado and I have not only written an op-ed addressing the inequity in our town regarding schools opening in person and remaining open. And today, we also sent a letter to the county supervisors and Public Health Department pleading for school employees to be prioritized for vaccinations as soon as possible. 26 states plus the District of Columbia have done so and have been vaccinating teachers for weeks. And numerous counties in California are also doing so now or in the very near future. I believe it's the right and just thing to do in Santa Barbara County. We will let you know what response we get. And with that, we can move on to public comments. This is the time when we have comments from the public about items that are not on the agenda for this evening. And because of the number of public comments tonight throughout the meeting, they're limited to two minutes each, and they were informed of this earlier this afternoon. So Ms. Trujillo, do you have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Thank you, President Ford. Yes, we do have five speakers for this item. I will name them all. Kim Pasgage, Jennifer Hale, Connie Alexander, Sheridan Rosenberg, and Christian Alonso. And I will begin with Kim Pasgage. You may begin.
Hello, Board members. I understand that public comment serves a purpose and provides our Board with community feedback. But sadly, these meetings have turned into a public—a harmful public space. There are speakers that come every week to give public comment at every Board meeting that say homophobic and white supremacist statements addressing their subjects directly by race, as we saw last week. I think of the students, especially LGBTQ+ and students of color, who hear these comments. What is the impact on them? What is the collective emotional toll these harmful comments cause? All students and families should feel like a School Board meeting is a safe place where they belong. Last week, you passed the Equity Resolution. As School Board members, I understand that there are Brown Act rules, and I respect freedom of speech. But is hate speech protected during public comment? Thank you, Board President Kate Ford, for mentioning hate speech tonight. Are you able, as a Board, to clearly outline what falls under the category of hate speech? Can you create a Code of Conduct statement that is read at every Board meeting that condemns, in the strongest possible terms, white supremacy ideology and hate speech? Can the Board spell out the type of public discourse that is expected and consequences for noncompliance? I would also appreciate an explanation of the Board's limitation so we understand why offensive and harmful comments go unchallenged. I think we can do better in having productive commentary without doing damage to our children and families listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Hale. Ms. Hale, thank you. Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to reiterate what Kim just spoke about and the need that I feel is urgent for respect and civility in public discourse. And I too appreciate President Ford's statement made this evening. It was—it was noticed by most of us on this call. But unfortunately, there is a pattern of hateful discriminatory speech that has infiltrated public comment. And sadly, it's become part of the fabric of these meetings. There are community members who feel emboldened, and they make racist statements, white supremacist remarks. And it's happening over and over and seemingly without any regard to the impact of the words on our children. If you've been on these calls for any number of time, you've heard it over and over so many times that it's become normalized. In fact, you can look at any future agenda and predict exactly when these harmful public comments will occur. I absolutely respect everyone's right for freedom of speech, and no one should be silenced. But as a parent, I can't help but think about these harmful comments and how they're impacting our students, especially students of color and kids who already feel othered by the educational system. How many students have joined these meetings to get information and been blindsided by degrading remarks about racial, cultural, linguistic, or sexual identities that are being labeled as threats or failures? As leaders, I would really urge you to set and enforce guidelines that can protect our kids, to clearly define what constitutes hate speech, as Kim mentioned, and to set the expectation, as you did earlier, President Ford, for civility. This Code of Conduct should be reiterated before every meeting, on every speaker request form, and promoted everywhere that public comment is mentioned. All of this is within the framework of the Brown Act. These are School Board meetings where all students and families should feel welcome, included, and most especially safe. So as a collective School Board community, I hope that you will urge the adults in the room to do better.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Connie Alexander. Ms. Alexander, can you hear us? I am going to loop back with Ms. Connie Alexander, and I will go on to our next speaker, which is Sheridan Rosenberg.
Thank you. So now that we're going back to in-person learning, which is a huge relief, I've been bringing this up at every Board meeting, asking, what is your plan for disclosing to parents and to the community at large if there are any current or former predators that are still either former staff members or current staff members? And how you're going to disclose to the public immediately? I think that it's very important that if there are others out there who have abused children, now is your time to go ahead and put out a notice through Kami Barnwell so that we can all be alerted, especially parents and students returning to in-person learning. The second thing I wanted to mention was, I find it a little troubling that you're referring to each other as sister Board members. You know, you were elected as individuals, not as a group. I do think that it does fly in the face of the Brown Act. It's as if sisters—it's sort of a familial kind of connection that would really indicate a loyalty to each other and not necessarily to the student body community at large or parents and families. And I would really encourage you from refraining from using that term because it's a little unnerving for someone who, you know, is a taxpayer in the community and would hope that you would sort of stand as individuals on issues and not as some sort of implied familial type of alliance and allegiance to each other. And that's all I really need to say up for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be calling Connie Alexander.
Thank you, and good evening. I hope you can hear me now.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much. My comments this evening have to do with Ethnic Studies Now. A couple of weeks ago, there was a parent square that went out that really framed some information that was inaccurate. And I haven't seen a correction of that information. You know, Ethnic Studies Now, the origin of that is student and grass and community-led. And they were positioned and said that they were a nonprofit organization, which is not true. And I've been waiting for the last couple of weeks to see if you were going to actually go back and correct that because the harm that's come to these young people since— I mean, as a nonprofit leader, you have access to resources and boards. When you're a community, grass-led organization, you don't have access to that. And these young people have been trusting and trustworthy and tried to trust their relationship with you. And I'm really disappointed to see that no one has stepped up to correct that because that was egregious. And then we had people jump on here that used that information that you put out to say things that were inaccurate. And so, you know, we need to trust when you put out information that it's correct. You have an equity statement. I'm not sure why we have an equity statement when we don't treat everyone with that same equity. And, you know, somebody sitting here knows that that information went out was incorrect, and it didn't get—it didn't get changed. These young people have trusted you, and it was really disappointing to see them kind of basically thrown under the bus here. So I am asking you to please do better, and let's do something better with these kinds of relationships. Nonprofits—which I am—I am part of a nonprofit—we have resources. They don't have those kinds of resources. So let's make sure that everything that is said that is accurate and what goes out. Because just like the last couple of speakers said, look at what's happening in the landscape of the twisted and how that happens. And so I know—because I know a lot of these young people— what kind of harm this has caused personally the last couple of weeks. So thank you, and please, let's do better.
Thank you. Our last speaker on this item is Christian Alonso. Mr. Alonso?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, Board members. My name is Christian Alonso, and I'm the president of the Santa Barbara Young Democrats. Thank you so much for your time. Oddly enough, I also wanted to make a public comment about public comment tonight. President Ford and the other speakers addressed a lot of what I wanted to discuss in their comments. But it became apparent to me from School Board meetings last year that many groups have been abusing the general comment section of the agenda to essentially skip the public comment line. As I'm sure you're aware, they sign up to give general comment on non-agenda items and then go ahead and give comment on some of the more controversial agenda items. It sounds petty to complain about when there are real issues before this Board, but a particular group has a habit of opening up every single one of these meetings with a cavalcade of hatred and racism. I know it's difficult to try to control public comment in this space, but I'm pleading with the Board President and the other Board members to examine ways in which we can better regulate this section of public comment and cut down on the people abusing the rules so they don't have to wait until their specific agenda item. So for example, I could easily use my speaking time right now to add my voice to the many folks tonight speaking in favor of the Planned Parenthood Memorandum of Understanding. I could talk about all kinds of things that are on the agenda with my time right now, and it would be hard for the Board to stop me. So I know this issue sucks, and I really wish people would just follow the rules. But these groups have really demonstrated why we can't have nice things. There are already enough barriers to joining these meetings and participating in this vital process as it is without elevating the voices of a few privileged white folks to the front of the line while others wait patiently, sometimes for hours, to speak. So I don't know what the answer is to this because a lot of folks, often parents, do legitimately have non-agenda items to discuss. But I would ask that the Board do more to stop the abuse of the public comment section. And all of that having been said, I did want to thank Sandra Trujillo for her heroic efforts to organize and facilitate all of this public comment. So thanks so much for hearing me out.
Thank you, President Ford. That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you so much. At this time, we're just a few minutes behind, but it is time for our regularly scheduled COVID-19 report. I'll ask Superintendent Maldonado, the Cabinet, and guests to proceed with Report Number 14. I also just want to clarify for the public that this is a report tonight. The Board is not taking on any action on any aspect of the report. So we've allotted 60 minutes to this item, and I will turn it over to you, Ms. Maldonado.
Thank you, President Ford. And we'll go ahead and start with—we're actually in Report Number 15. We'll go to the next slide. And as promised, here is our lovely note from our students and family. And thank you, Mr. Rouse, for delivering that. Next slide. So, Board members, as you can see, we have been working with these drivers for school reopening. We have been checked—we have checkmarks to show all the different things we have done to date that have prepared us to open our elementary spaces, preschool to sixth grade, including TK. I was asked to make sure that I clarify that. And the only thing left for us to do is having our families choose, restate their choice for their in-person or distance learning. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, including our amazing partner, Susan Clay Rothschild, to give us the rest of the update.
Thank you for having me again with you tonight. I'm happy to bring some good news. First, I begin with saying, where are we with our numbers and our data in terms of Santa Barbara County? Yes, we, like most of the state, remain in purple. But if you notice, our adjusted case rate is now 36.4. That's down. And our new positivity rate is 10.2. That's down, and you'll see a little bit more about that. Next slide, please. So this shows you over time where we're at, and you know, on the left-hand side, that was last year, almost a year ago. And we had the jump in July and then the big leap over the holidays. Really, really concerning about how much the COVID case rate increased over the holidays. But you can see that it is down. We went from 47 to 36. So we're really headed in the right direction now. This is not the time to step back and stop doing the good things that work, wearing a mask, keeping physical distance. We want to get it down to that 25 per 100,000 number. That's a key number with our state in terms of allowing elementary school children back to school. Next slide, please. This is a slide that shows all of the things we do to improve success and limit transmission of COVID. One of the things we've learned in the last year is there's not one magic bullet or one magic pill. Rather, it's a number of things that create barriers to transmission, and we put all those together. That's what keeps our, our community and our school community safe. So all of these things, things that we do individually by having personal distance and wearing masks, and things we do as a community that help with the ventilation in schools and all the quarantine actions and contact tracing. Together, all of those create a safe school environment, and that's what we really want to see. Next slide, please. This is some new information I thought would be helpful for you to know. The county has estimated how many people are in each of the categories for the phases of getting the vaccination. And the very first phase are those healthcare workers on the left, the dark blue, who are frontline workers. And the next box, the orange, are the 75 and over. Those are the first, so we call it Phase 1A. Those folks have really been the ones that have been vaccinated, beginning in December of this last year and through the current time. The next group of categories, those age 65 to 74, educators and childcare, Food and Ag workers, and emergency medical service workers, all of those categories are in what we call Phase 1B. They're all next. The question is, how do we get there? Because we really want those folks vaccinated. And the real issue at this point is the supply of vaccine. Next slide, please. So we are working very hard to get enough vaccine and to get it out to people and to get enough information so people, children can come back to school and families can know that their children are safe and that staff are safe in school systems. So the county looked at a lot of what's been going on, what we've been doing, how there are equity issues in regards to opening schools, some being open and some not in the same geographic areas. What can we do? One thing we did, and the Dr. Von DeRino so spoke to this with the Board of Supervisors this morning, and there was a very positive response. The county has written a letter that was sent by the Close of Business today to the California Department of Public Health. And the letter endorsed and strongly supported the reability of the elementary schools in Santa Barbara Unified to reopen for in-person learning and gave good rationale for this and asked for the reopening within seven days of submission of the, the letter. I, I feel like this was a really strong step the county took, and I think it was the right step. The county has said very clearly, they want to support reopening of schools. Santa Barbara Unified has done all that is required, met the requirements, completed the safety plan, done extra checks. We want this to go forward. And let me just say also that, that the county has said very clearly that within the supply of vaccine, contingent upon the supply of vaccine, and until we have a third-party administrator, the third-party administrator is something that state has come into a contract with Blue Shield for the distribution of vaccine. So in between then, that's where the county has the ability to distribute the vaccine and make decisions. And the county has said they will maintain the priority of educators for that time period with the contingency of, do we have enough vaccine? Do we get it? And until the third-party administrator takes over, if in fact they make decisions. So I wanted you to know that. The last, the bottom part of the slide here just shows you what schools and school districts have made, have sent in safety plans and had them approved, and we just had Vista Del Mar approved today also. So that one's in line, and we also have Adelante that's been submitted for approval. So other school districts like Santa Barbara Unified are doing what they can to be prepared to open safely for students and for staff. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Ms. Maldonado, President Ford, and school board. I appreciate Susan Klein Rothschild always coming on here and giving you the county perspective prior to me giving you an update on where we are in the district. Before I start talking about the data, I want to remind the board and those watching that every day on our campuses, in total, we have upwards of 3,000 individual staff and student who are on our 17 campuses. And so, keeping that in mind when we talk about the numbers in terms of COVID positivity. So our first case of COVID-19 on a school site occurred on September 28th. So when we're looking at this data tonight, this is the data reaching back to late September. We didn't have another case again until November 1st. And that was really the time period when we were enjoying that period of being in the red and talking about getting, getting to gold. There were, but then Halloween happened, and we had eight cases on campus in November, with cases spiking post Thanksgiving to the point where we had 28 cases in December. And if you're like me, you recall Dr. Fauci and others in the summer talking about this possible second wave of COVID coming in the winter. And indeed, we now know that, that that did occur. So 28 cases in December, and the real spike occurred for us just last month in January, when as a district, we experienced 70 cases on school campuses or other district property. Now, the vast majority, as you can see here, the, the staff are represented in red. 75% of the cases that we have experienced have been adults, with a quarter of our cases being students. Only nine of those cases are probable workplace transmissions. That's, that's a really important piece to all of this. So of, again, I go back to that 3,000 individuals being on campuses and in district offices each day, and we had nine transmissions of COVID. It's also important to point out that those cases, in every single instance, those transmissions occurred because safety protocols that we have laid out are very strict. Protocols lapsed, and were not followed in those cases. We have talked to the individuals involved. Principals and other supervisors and leaders have followed up with staff members to tighten, tighten up. And it is important to note that no students have been linked to any transmission on district property. So I want to point out that after an especially rough January, we only experienced three cases last week. And that was a hopeful sign for us. We didn't have any cases yesterday, and normally on Mondays after a weekend, and when I say normally, for the last few months, we've experienced that on, that Mondays, we see an uptick because people go get tested on the weekends or Fridays. This makes us very optimistic that we're headed back to the levels that we had in early November. And really, perhaps March will be like October, where we didn't have any cases on campus. And I say that not from a place of naivete, but rather having looked at our data for many months. And I know that we're, it's looking like we're going to have students and teachers back on campus the beginning of March, and that makes me really excited. And I believe in the safety plans that we put in place that, that we can maintain low levels of COVID. I really think our schools are some of the safer places to be in our community. Now, tonight I did bring you, as you can see, the data in a different format, sharing the positive cases by student and staff at each school site. And we see that 12 of our schools and programs have experienced fewer than five cases, dating all the way back to September. Eight of those involving only adults and no students. Monroe gets a shout-out tonight. Monroe Elementary, they've had no cases of COVID on campus despite running small cohorts. And of, of the other six schools that had more than five cases, only one, Santa Barbara High School, has had more than 10. They've had a total of 21 cases. And it's important to note that this increased number at Santa Barbara High School, really, we need to point at the fact that the student cases exceed the staff cases. As you recall, I have shared, going back into November, that we were concerned about the, the activities and decisions of, of our older adolescents. And, and perhaps we're seeing that play out here in this data. I have spoken extensively, a number of times, with Dr. Simmons at Santa Barbara High School about this data. And I know that she's committed to making sure the school is safe and has had many, many one-on-one conversations and conversations with her staff about safety on, on the campus. Uh, next slide, please. So as Susan Klein Rothschild noted, our COVID safety plan, which was approved by Santa Barbara Public Health on Friday, and then I submitted it Saturday to the California Department of Public Health, along with the required checklist. You know, that, that COVID safety plan is not brand-new. Rather, it's actually, I had to go back and check. It's the fourth iteration of our original plan that was written all the way back in July. So this is something we've, it's not that we've put new things in place, but rather, we've been adding and adjusting to the safety along the way. Both of those documents are available on our district website. And later this week, they'll also be available on school websites, along with each school's version of their COVID-19 safety plan that has information specific to their site. In the last board meeting, I stated that several times that when Santa Barbara County drops below 25 cases per 100,000, Santa Barbara Unified will be ready to open schools. And we've been ready for a while. And I want the board and the, and the public to recall again that we have approximately 25% of our students on campus in small cohorts and athletics every day. So I'm going to keep restating that it's not new for us to have students and adults on campuses. It's just that we're, we're going to be bringing more back on to campus. And we take their safety and the safety of the adults who support them very seriously. So to reiterate, we are ready. And these are the ways in which we are ready. This is what we have attested to. This is what Santa Barbara County Public Health has, has decided or confirmed that we have done. And that is that we have very thorough health and hygiene practices, and we promote those actively. We have plans for cleaning, disinfection, and ventilation. Distancing, we have specific plans, not just for distancing indoors and outdoors, but for distancing indoors and outdoors at lunchtime, at recess, at breaks, when students come onto campus, when students leave campus. We have established protocols to limit sharing of classroom materials, as well as other materials that students will use outside of the classroom or at recess or during athletics. We have a very thorough screening, monitoring, and response protocol by the use of iPass on our campuses, as well as secondary screening. And yes, we have planning for full and partial closures. We have had to close small cohorts and have students participate in distance learning and then return when their quarantine is up. We have a plan in place if that has to happen. We do contact tracing through our nurses, staff testing plans that Dr. Vecchio has talked to you about a number of times. And then our newest piece, which is adding student diagnostic testing. So as we return to school, we'll be working with families who request a diagnostic test, be working with them to make sure that they can get those tests and get them readily and at no cost. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Steve Vizzolini to talk to you about facilities capacity.
Evening, board members. Superintendent Maldonado. So our facilities capacity, we've got some news on our ventilation testing. We're just about complete with the entire district now. We are going to go back to a few classrooms that appear to need a little bit of work, but that's a very, very small percentage of our classrooms. We have done our testing that you saw that the folks from UCSB brought to us. We had our protocol that we followed, and what we're finding is that probably close to 95% of our classrooms are well in excess of the six air changes per hour that they recommended. That's really, really good news for us, and it's, it's basically based on the architecture of our school sites and the fact that we have lots of cross-flow ventilation, lots of, lots of windows and lots of doorways. Classroom configurations are well along the way. Most, I was in a secondary principals' meeting today and was assured that most of the classrooms in the high school district are ready to go as far as social distancing inside the classroom. We are revisiting this week the elementaries with our, with Mr. Rafa Donato, who's our custodial services supervisor, and he's, his task is going to be to go out and double-check that we have made all these rooms in a configuration that's going to work. And we are ready to help out, to move furniture or do whatever we need to do, but the plan is to get going right now and get it finished. Outdoor classroom spaces are all done. All the tents were put up. We put up, I believe, 75 permanent tents. There are also lots of movable pop-up tents that are in lots of places on campus. So we've got lots of areas outside for outdoor teaching if we need it. Daily disinfecting is continuing. We have logs on all of our classrooms and all of our spaces that show when they're disinfected. And we still have a trained staff that has plenty of inventory. They have proper PPE, and they've been trained to do it properly. We have signage at all of our entry points and at various other places along paths of travel inside the schools. We have arrows, we have lines, we have dots that indicate social distancing. So I think from a facility standpoint, we're in really good shape. Next speaker, please.
All right. Good evening, board members. Superintendent Maldonado. I'm really proud to bring this slide to you tonight. You have seen this before, and, and before you, it really indicated what our goals were in HR in terms of hiring for reopening for hybrid. And what I'm able to show you tonight is, is that our staff, I'm really proud of the work of Brian Tanguay and Carla Preciado, who work every day to try to meet these I'm really proud of the work of Brian Tanguay and Carla Preciado, who work every day to try to meet these goals. Just today, we had our 20th paraprofessional accept a position, so we'll work to clear. We have six floater custodians, which was the goal. Actually, we hired more than that because we had to move those floaters into positions that were vacant. And so we ended up hiring back a couple more, so we have six now. We also have nine out of the 11 playground supervisor positions and 42 of the substitutes, our goal was 40. We've actually hired many more than that though, because we have actually deployed subs into long-term positions, so we had to backfill those once we moved them. So this really is an indication of the, the great work of, of Brian and Carla. And these, these are almost all deployed to the site, so we're still working on clearing the last few. I also wanted to mention that, that we will have hybrid subs in place. And we're going to continue to hire hybrid subs. But we also have a subcaller system that is going to be deployed. And we believe that there are subs on our sub list that we know, we've talked to them. They did not want to take a long-term position that met every single day. And so we will open back up to having subs take one-off positions on this day or that day. And so that will help us as well as we open to in-person instruction. And then I also wanted to remind you of our tiered coverage plan. It's been a while since you've seen it. But we did develop, I don't know if Brian can put the slide up, so I can just give you a quick reminder. But the tiered coverage plan is something we developed so that the principals are, are going to deploy the people on their sites to the positions that are needed on a day-to-day basis. But when there is a vacant position that's needing to be filled on any given morning, any given day, there's these tier three and tier four that are developed by the district where we will have real people assigned to those schools that, that'll fill the immediate needs at the different school sites. So I did want to make sure you are aware and bring this back in front of you so you can see that we have a system in place so that we have schools covered and we have the staff that's going to be needed at each of the sites. And with that, I will turn it over to, I believe, Maria.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Beckio. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Maldonado. As we prepare our schools for a return to in-person school, we will need to reconfirm family choice for in-person or distance learning. We remind our families that a verification survey was sent this past November, and we do have that information for our families. And we'll be resharing that starting tomorrow so that as a reminder for what it was that families selected this past fall, we will then ask families, again, starting tomorrow, to please indicate or confirm their preference for in-person or distance learning. And we would also like to encourage our families to attend an informational meeting should they need additional information before making their choice. Tomorrow evening, we will hold one session in English with interpretation to Spanish at 5:30 and a session entirely in Spanish with interpretation to English at 7:00 PM. Their confirmation will help us with the reorganization of classes based on their choices. And this will allow us to send confirmation and final notice of class assignments beginning the week, next week, actually. And of course, all of this pending the state approval and/or adjusted case rate of less than 25 of 100,000. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wagonick.
Thank you, Ms. Larios Horton. So, board, I bring you to the last slide of this presentation for tonight. And at first glance, it doesn't look super exciting, but to me, it, it definitely is. And I know the rest of the cabinet feels the same way. We're ready to reopen, I'll say that again. Will there be challenges? Absolutely. New problems to solve? Yes, but we feel confident in our teachers, our staff, our principals, who will lead these schools. And in partnership with our parents, we know that, that we are ready to have our students back on campus. And we're going to continue to work together, school leaders, teachers, families and students, to make everyone aware and feel comfortable with all that's required of our health and safety protocols so that everyone feels healthy and safe and, and ready to learn. We, in, in preparation for building this timeline and really looking at what we needed to achieve to open schools as soon as the county adjusted case rate drops to below 25, we did, we have reached out to the superintendent's teacher advisory task force. We have a meeting, another meeting tomorrow with our reentry task force. And of course, input from principals and other stakeholders through the process. So, you know, we look at today, February 9th, and it was really about a year ago that we were starting to hear about this coronavirus coming out of China. And so a year in, we're now looking and very close to hitting that goal of 25 to 100K. But today, Dr. Vando Reynoso made the statement to the county board of supervisors that she was recommending that we reopen. And so that's given us a boost. But I think it's important, and, and while we appreciate that from county public health, we've been very confident that the numbers were going to continue to drop and we'd be able to open. So we've been preparing. The elementary schools are going to reopen in hybrid learning as early as February 26th. And then we're even now looking beyond that to when we get into the red. So if the trends in the data continue, we've, we feel confident that we will reach the red tier with time to reopen our secondary schools. So our secondary principals are also mobilizing and getting ready to reopen. So what are these reopening activities? First, our information campaign, and Ms. Larios Horton talked about the information night that we'll be having tomorrow night. And then also principals are having their school-specific reopening nights for elementary. We really want families to know what to expect when schools reopen. Our second activity is having families confirm their choice of either in-person or distance learning. So they'll, they'll be confirming the choice that they made in November. And then finally, teachers will receive their new student rosters. And so there's a lot that's going to be happening in the next few weeks. We're excited to do this work and really, this is our focus for the rest of February, is to get schools open. And with that, I, I do want to say, it, it's, question has come up about preschool. Our preschools have really been running under the leadership of Daisy Ochoa. So when we say reopening schools, I want to make sure that folks know that our preschools are, are a part of that and, and actually have been ahead of the rest of us. With that, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Maldonado.
Thank you, Dr. Wagonick, and that concludes our report, President Ford and Board members.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Ojio. I believe we have public comments on COVID-19.
That's correct, President Ford. We have eight speakers on this item, and we'll name them all so they can be ready. Sunita Beal, Floret Janigan, Karen McBride, Carolyn Hera, Amy Armstrong, Haley Silva, Shannon Shorter and Usha Adabury. We'll begin with Sunita Beal.
Hello. Good evening Supervisor Maldonado and District Board members. My name is Sunita Beal. I'm a parent of two high school students in the district. I have deep faith in our schools and great hope that they can recover from the effects of the pandemic. I am pleased to hear that the district and the public health department are requesting a rapid return to in-person school, at least at the elementary level. One issue that I would like to bring up is the idea of a safe return to in-person school. As you know from the discussions at these meetings, as well as on online forums, this means different things to different people. There have been very hostile conversations about safety on these forums. When I read the comments, I realize that you, the district and the school board, have played a silent role. You have not promoted an open discussion in this community about the specifics of reopening schools from the teacher and staff standpoint. And by leaving parents out of this discussion, you have fostered an atmosphere of fear and distrust. But it is not too late. Right now, you have an opportunity to create a sense of community amongst all these groups. So I ask you, show us good faith by initiating discussions with the union now, not next week, and start the open conversation that needs to happen between the union, the district and families. Finally, I have something to say to everyone involved in these discussions. During the past 11 months, if you ate fresh produce or meat, if you ordered food for takeout, if you shopped in a grocery store, if you went to a doctor or a dentist because you had something that needed to be taken care of, if you had your car fixed or bought things that you needed, you interacted with people who worked in environments with far less safety than what is available at schools. And many of these people, and that includes me, are parents. And we are asking you, in a safe environment, to take care of our children in person the way we have taken care of you in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Floret Janigan. Ms. Janigan, can you hear us?
I'm mute. Am I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, thank, thank you, school board members and Superintendent Maldonado for this opportunity to speak. I am grateful for Board President Ford and Superintendent Maldonado's recent letter and news hawk, as well as Dr. Del Reynoso discussing the issues of equity for our public school students in accessing hybrid in-person learning. As a parent of secondary school students, I am so concerned that the public schools, secondary and primary, are not in hybrid learning. However, private schools are. The lives of families are enriched through our interactions in our public school communities. Our public school community takes pride in our diversity, both economic and cultural. I am concerned that this will be forever changed and those left behind will never catch up and will continue to disengage. We are approaching one year of online learning. But online learning has actually impacted two academic grade levels for students. One-third of our students are getting Ds or Fs is evidence of this impact on two academic grade levels. I want to thank our wonderful and amazing teachers, administrators and school staff at Santa Barbara Junior High and Santa Barbara High School for all you are doing to engage and help our students. I am sure the thought of returning to school in the midst of a pandemic is worrisome. I want to let you know that parents like me want to help. Our community has shown great courage and support for each other through numerous emergencies, evacuations, wildfires and mudslides. We have worked together, parents, community, school, to help each other. We can do that again during this COVID pandemic. Let's work to preserve our connection to our community in unity and open up our schools. Michelle Obama has said, "Public education is our greatest pathway to opportunity in America." It's time to open that pathway with hybrid instruction. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Karen McBride. Ms. McBride, can you hear us? Ms. McBride, can you hear us? Can you please unmute yourself?
People need to come back to her, Sandra.
Yes. I welcome back to her. Next is, one moment, Carolyn Hera.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Caroline Hera, a parent of a high school senior and a seventh grader. I'm so glad to hear that case rates are declining and that you are ready for a near-term return to elementary. But I can't help but feel a little deja vu. We've been here before and the district failed to take timely action and get kids back into the classroom. Frankly, after a year of witnessing the district's struggle through decision-making, many parents are wondering what exactly it is we're fighting for. Students are fatigued, depressed, hopeless. Many are falling behind in core subjects. Roughly one-third are failing in at least one class. Some have given up altogether, choosing to drop out of school, graduate early or, or leave the public school system. But you already know this, you see the data. Have you considered that maybe the district is sowing the seeds of its own demise? What do you think enrollment will look like next year when so many families feel the school system has failed their children? Many parents have lost confidence, confidence in a return to school this year or even next. Last week, you issued a public statement demanding the governor allow a return to school, claiming the district was ready to return. Tonight, you said you were waiting for a response, but the governor has already given you his answer. He told you all previous guidance is negotiable. He even offered financial and other incentives to get elementary back to school this month. We don't need you to wait for a response from the governor or even be ready for the current standards. We need you to be problem solvers and to establish standards that are more relevant to our community so we can get our kids back to school now. That means working with departments of public health at the local and state level to advocate for a tier modification more relevant to the classroom. The current one is better suited, suited for restaurant dining. It also means working with the teachers' union to address objections head-on, refusing to accept resistance based on fear, not science. We have a window of opportunity here. Let's learn from past mistakes and not miss out like we did last summer and fall. Let's bring back elementary this month and secondary in March. In your own words, we are ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sophie Armstrong.
Hi, I'm Sophie. I'm 13 years old and I'm in junior high. In August, I moved to Santa Barbara. We were supposed to write six words for school on what we thought about 2020. And I wrote that the Zoom disease is dehumanizing me. Imagine you're me, new to school and trying to make friends, but all you can do is look at a Zoom screen and consider people superficially and try to think, is that someone that I'd like to be friends with? Would they want to be friends with me? I can't even meet them in person. So all I can really do is send them an email and try to start a friendship. This isn't the way my seventh grade is supposed to be or how friendships are supposed to be made. I've been in two different junior highs and my mom keeps asking people, how is my daughter supposed to connect with other students? And they don't really have an answer because it's just incredibly difficult to connect with people online. Every day, I sort of feel like I'm acting on camera and I can't really show how I feel. I haven't really made any friends and it's so lonely and so hard to connect with other people. My eyes hurt so much from looking at the screen from 8:30 to 3:00, plus homework. And I'm wondering, why did they open bars and not schools? We need to prioritize your children's education and happiness. It's very important for teens to be together in person and connect with them in real life. I desperately hope to see people. We can't keep waiting. I know many others that would agree with me. Thank you for listening. Have a great night.
Thank you. Next, we'll try Ms. Karen McBride. Ms. McBride, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. My comments are, are very brief tonight. A good evening, President Ford, members of the board and Superintendent Maldonado. I, I guess the, the pace at which things are changing has been a little disconcerting, so. And I know that I have folks that are part of our association that really want to be back in classroom, in the classroom with teachers and, I'm sorry, with students. And, and also a lot of members who are fearful and have experienced COVID. And also, a lot of members who are fearful and have experienced COVID on deep levels in their own families. So I really want the board and the district to be sensitive to that. I know that there has been an effort all along, but it's going to get real here real fast if we go back soon without vaccinations. So I just want to commit to doing everything I can to participate in trying to get vaccinations. I, you know, I'm just a teacher, but hopefully there's something that I can do. I also want to point out that both of the unions have been involved all along in helping to shape the safety protocols and processes that are happening on the school sites now and will continue to happen. So we have been involved. I really feel strongly that we have. The one thing that I would like to represent to the public here tonight is that there is a sense that the school board needs to practice what they are asking teachers to put into practice. And so I want to ask publicly tonight that you resume your meetings in a public space when you ask us to go back. And we'll continue this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Haley Silva.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I am a teacher employed by Santa Barbara Unified School District, and I feel the need to urge the board to keep our campuses closed. Not schools closed, the school's been operating. But our campuses close until COVID rates return to like those acceptable levels of transmission. And more importantly, teachers have been vaccinated. I interact with students every day, and I really miss seeing their faces in person. It's hard for teachers and students both to miss out on that personal communication and the classroom community that makes teaching so fulfilling, right? I am 100% of the time going to put the safety of my community ahead of my personal desire and preference to provide instruction in person. There's evidence that folks who have been vaccinated are less likely to be asymptomatic carriers of COVID. As a teacher, I've not heard any definitive plan on when this is going to happen, what vaccines are going to be fulfilled. And folks are already working in person with youth who have not been vaccinated or haven't had access to them. I believe deeply in my soul that it's imperative that staff are provided with the opportunity to be vaccinated as part of our return to campus plan. I work on the school site every day. I've seen how our district's cleaning and hygiene protocols have been implemented. Our custodial staff is barely able to keep up, and there's only a third of our students on campus, right? I don't know what we're expecting of our hard-working custodial staff when there are hundreds of students on our campuses. They're overworked, they're understaffed, they're under-supported by the district. There's simply not enough people to keep our campuses safe and clean for everyone. The school board has also spoken on equity and uses the guise of equity to reopen school campuses to our entire school population if it doesn't take into account the climbing rates of COVID among our most vulnerable populations. According to the CDC, Latinx, Indigenous, and Black communities are experiencing higher hospitalization rates than white communities. In Santa Barbara County, marginalized groups are dying of COVID that far exceed white and economically privileged groups. How are we going to keep them safe?
Time, thank you. We'll go on to Shannon Shorter.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Maldonado and School Board members. I'm very heartened to hear that there is now a very real possibility of our elementary schools reopening in the near future. In fact, when I signed up to comment this evening, parents had not yet heard the news that our county public health had appealed to the State Department of Health to allow our schools to reopen. I applaud the swift efforts of the last few weeks. I do hope that you continue to follow the science to make more informed decisions in the future and that future communications are timely and transparent. I want to say that throughout this pandemic, our teachers have been working hard every day on Zoom, and we truly appreciate the extra effort that they are putting in. And they are the reason that we are clinging to hope of returning to school. As an educator myself, I understand the challenges of teaching remotely. My children are very much looking forward to Santa Barbara Schools reopening, and I look forward to hearing more about this in the coming days. We've had a lot of ups and downs these last six months of the school year, and I hope that this time when I tell my daughter that she's returning to school in person soon, it's not an empty promise. I echo the need for the community to continue to wear masks and practice social distancing so that our children and staff members can enter school with confidence and that the community is doing their part. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Usha Attarbury.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Maldonado. My name is Usha Attarbury, and I'm a teacher with Santa Barbara Unified. I learned today that the Santa Barbara Public Health Department is sending a request to the state to allow the reopening of SBUSD schools. If the state approves this request, Santa Barbara Unified will be allowed to open grades TK through 6 as early as February 26. I'm speaking tonight to urge you not to open schools until all teachers and staff have the opportunity to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. According to the COVID Board Report Number 15, there have been 114 confirmed COVID cases on SBUSD campuses with 84 staff members and 30 students testing positive. These confirmed positives only reflect the tiny percentages of students and staff who are regularly on campuses while most campuses are closed. These numbers include nine cases of COVID transmission that took place on SBUSD property. Let me repeat that again. COVID-19 is spreading on campuses while schools are closed, and the vast majority of teachers and students are engaged in distance learning. As a teacher, I see the disadvantages that many of my homeless, foster youth, socio-economically disadvantaged, and EML students face on a daily basis, and it makes me incredibly sad and angry. It is also a fact that many of my students are struggling academically and emotionally. However, I believe it would be incredibly irresponsible to jeopardize the lags of teacher and staff in order to provide in-person instruction when we could be vaccinated in a matter of weeks. Please, I urge you to wait until teachers and staff have the opportunity to receive a vaccine before opening our schools for additional in-person instruction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. President Ford, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. So I would like to, at this time, open it up to questions or comments from board members. And let me see if I can get a chance to see you in case you are raising your... There's a hand. So I'll start with Ms. Capps, please.
Thank you to the team, thanks to our speakers. I really want to focus in on vaccinations, as some of our speakers have raised. As our county makes progress but has a long way to go, I just, again, agree with so many of the speakers and so many folks who have written in how important it is, as we all know, to vaccinate teachers and staff. We know that other counties are doing it, other places in California are doing it. I've watched the Board of Supervisors this morning. I understand the limitations and why we are going deep on 75-plus because that's the most vulnerable. But I do believe that strongly, and I want to commend Superintendent Maldonado and Board President Ford for sending a letter to this effect, that we need to start vaccinating teachers tomorrow as soon as possible. It is the way in which this will all work. I don't think it has to happen sequentially necessarily, but I do see this as this three-legged stool that we have, as has been declared here and repeatedly over the last few weeks. We're ready. The science now shows, science that we didn't have in the fall, that children, especially under 10 or 12, do not transmit and do not get COVID the same way that those who are older do. So we have the science, and we're ready. And now, the third part of that stool, vaccinations, would really give us the boost to make this a reality as we all so desperately want. So whatever we can do, I know we have Susan Klein Rothschild, who's been a wonderful liaison with County Public Health to implore that we need to start opening up teachers and staff and weave them into the process of vaccinating the elderly. That's what we need to do. So I'm here to stand by and help in any way I can. Along with that, I think that we need, as a district, to be ready for how to do that. I know that we're hearing, changing information understandably from the county about the state's role and what that might be with Blue Shield, et cetera. I get that there's a lot of information that we're waiting on from the state. But I would like to ask Superintendent Maldonado, with deep respect for all of the other work, if we could put together our own vaccination plan so that we're ready to go as soon as we get the green light. I know that the district doesn't have vaccines. The district does not at all have jurisdiction over the doses. But as soon as our county is able to open it up to teachers, that we get out of the gate with a bang and we're ready to go. The way that you have figured out wonderfully how to test teachers and staff, 400, I think, in one day at the Armory. So how we do that, where we do that, which sites, which prioritization, I certainly have my own thoughts about prioritizing teachers who are in the cohorts currently, elderly teachers, teachers with comorbidities, et cetera. But having those prioritization lists ready to go so that we have a plan for when that golden moment of vaccinating teachers is a reality here in our community, because it's coming. I wish it could come tomorrow, but it is coming. So vaccinations is really all I have on my mind right now in addition to the information that was shared this evening. I just wanted to thank the team and reiterate that support. And if you, I'm going to maybe just give you a chance to comment on your letter that was sent this afternoon, because I'm not sure that it really got the attention in this report, given the late-breaking nature of today. But if you could, either one of you, President Ford or Superintendent Maldonado, speak to the letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. I would, I just want to say that, just like advocating for our return to school, we will continue to do everything that we can. I have continuously communicated to Susan Klein Rothschild about our offer to use our school sites as vaccination places. Our offer to, in some way, if it's possible, to have our school nurses help with getting vaccination to our teachers and our school staff that are in schools currently. Starting with them as a priority, we in the district office would be last because we're not interfacing with so much of the public and our children and so forth. And so, yes, I can continue to collaborate with Public Health Department and create. We have created already a list of priorities, as was asked of us a couple of weeks ago, and we will make sure that we have that at the ready. Also figuring out ways that we can best communicate to our staff so that as soon as we get that notice, they can be assured that they will receive something from us as to how that will roll out. And I will continue to advocate with Dr. Do Reinozo, as well as Susan Klein Rothschild. The intent of our letter was also to let them know that we are here. We know how to do vaccinations. We've done it in school systems for many, for hundreds of years, for other types of health issues. We also deal with vaccinations as a school district. We require that from our children. So we have a system in place. We are used to doing these kinds of things, and we will certainly put something together.
Thank you. And President Ford, I do have one question that addresses the readiness factor. Again, I know you're, I know the district is communicating in a variety of different channels. I've been a part of that. This has to do with teachers feeling comfortable. We still continue to get notes and emails from teachers raising questions about their comfort level and very specific scenarios, whether it is ventilation or substitute teachers' staff readiness. Just, I know you've been going to each campus. Board members have joined you. So you can say it here to the teachers that are listening, and then we can communicate, over-communicate. What should a teacher do specifically if he or she doesn't feel comfortable about a very specific component of our safety plan? What's, where's the go-to in that? Certainly, we like to hear as board, but we're not, we're not, you know, operationalizing this. So what should a teacher do to voice those concerns? What's the most effective way?
Yes, so thank you for that question. Our teachers have a system of first going to their school site administrators. I have full confidence that our school site administrators will be able to answer their questions. They are also writing their own school site plans. If you recall, a couple of meetings back, for example, we had Principal Casey Kilgore, who showed us a map of her school that she has developed with her staff that shows where the different areas that will be used for their campus to ensure the social distancing and all the safety protocols are followed. Every single principal is developing those, has those, and are communicating those with their staff. So first, to the principal, if for any reason the principal can't answer their concerns, they should go to our assistant superintendents, Sean Carey for secondary, and Anna Escobedo for elementary. If their problem doesn't get resolved there, they can come to me. So those are some of the people that are in place. I also send every Friday an update to all our staff, which has, as was shared in a previous meeting, our COVID Task Force information. We have John Vecchio leading the work around staffing, and Dr. Raginac, of course, leading the work around our safety plan. There is a flow map there of how they can give us any information, whether it's concerns about their site, concerns for themselves. Anything that they need, we are here to listen and help.
Thank you for that. And lastly, I just want to commend you for the communication, even though it just went out today, you know, with this sort of breaking news from our county public health that they were going to be contacting the state public health. You know, I got a parent square within, it seemed like, within the hour. And immediately following that, a town hall or an information sharing. I'm not sure if we've given nod to that tonight because there's so much content. So if you could just, you know, remind everybody the time, and maybe we can put it out again. But I'm just, I just want parents and the 465 people that are listening to know that, again, tomorrow night, questions will be answered. And maybe Superintendent Maldonado, you can speak to that plan for tomorrow night.
Yes, we have two informational meetings scheduled for tomorrow at 5:30 an English-language meeting and at 7 o'clock in Spanish. I will rely on my team here to tell me how that's going on. I believe we are sending a parent square with the links. We'll post it on our website. We'll put it in our social media. We have various ways of communicating that information, the webinar for everyone to attend.
Thank you. So more on vaccine plans next time we meet, I imagine?
Yeah, sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Just wrapping up to affirm that we'll have more on our own vaccine plans by the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, President Ford.
Thank you. Ms. Alvarez.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Thank you, Ms. Klein Rothschild. And I have a question for you. Is there anything, what can we do, a subward, to help expedite the vaccines? I know that we're in Tier 1B. I understand that. But is there anything we can do to make this happen any faster?
My understanding, honestly, is that the lack of vaccine, the limited supplies of vaccine are the primary factor that is holding us from moving to vaccinating Tier 1B now. That is the real issue. And it is not just our issue. It is an issue statewide and an issue nationwide. We're happy to hear that Johnson &amp; Johnson, looks like they'll be getting an emergency approval for their vaccine soon. It also looks like the Pfizer vaccine will be made in half the time it was made previously. I would say to you, everything I've heard about all the participants who are currently delivering vaccinations, Cottage and Marion and the county, everyone has said very positive things about how efficient, how effective, how timely the system is. People sign up individually. They are vaccinating more than 1,000 people a day at those sites, and they are doing it in an effective manner. They are having over 100 staff at those sites who help give the vaccine and take all the steps that need to be taken. They've trained people. They're ready to do it. We just need the vaccine. I feel like the message you're giving is one that's shared. We are all honestly frustrated that we don't have enough vaccine to do it quickly, and everyone is doing what they can do within their power to make it happen.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you very much. And then I want to comment a little bit on the presentation that was made. Many of you know that I also do this for a living. I prepare these plans. I've been in a school that has been in session since September 28. And we have implemented all the protocols from CDC, from Santa Barbara Public Health, from California Department of Health, exactly like we are doing tonight. exactly like we are doing tonight. So I feel confident that, yes, we are ready. I have visited the sites with Ms. Maldonado, with Ms. McBride. And there's, there's safety, the school safety plans also have a COVID-19 plan, which is something we've never had before. That everything is so detailed. The students, the, the floors are marked. Students know where to line up. The teachers know how, where to enter, where to exit. We have purchased PPE. We have purchased additional instructional materials. Facility staff has been working extra. I, I believe that we are ready, and I'm confident that we will be successful. In Dr. Wagoner's report, I was doing the math as she was speaking, and we have 3,000 individuals on any given day on site. We've had about 3.8% of infections in five months. That's very encouraging. In addition to that, of those nine cases that are believed to be on campus, that's less than 1%. That is encouraging. So I'm very encouraged by that. And I do believe 100% that we are ready to go. And I thank the staff for all your hard work, your dedication. And also, we are all anxious for the vaccines. And as soon as we find out, we will let you know. I was texting with Dr. Vecchio a few minutes ago, and I said, we need to have a plan because the teachers are going to be taking whatever appointment they're able to get. And if their appointment is at a time that they're teaching, what is our plan to cover that class? And he assured me that they're, they are already working on the logistics of this, and they will be sending out that information to the teacher. So I hope that will ease a little bit of the anxiety. So, and in summary, thank you, everyone, for all your hard work. Thank you, teachers. Thank you, parents. And this is a very difficult situation for everyone, but it's a situation where we can all help. Everyone has a role in making this better and flattening the curve by doing everything we were telling, we all are told to do. Wash your hands, keep social distance, wear your mask. And now, parents, start telling your children, your kindergartners, your second graders that to wear their mask, practice with them. They need to keep it on during the day. If they need a break, they need to ask the teacher. So that's something you can help us with at the moment. Thank you, everyone, for all your support.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Munoz?
Yes, I just want to also, you know, as part of the sister board members that I have, you know, I don't want to repeat what they have said. Just emphasize that the vaccine, you know, we are an advocate of all school staff getting the vaccine when it's available. And, you know, also the thoroughness of everyone's participation in preparing our schools to be as best, as safe as possible. We understand, you know, we do read your letters. We know that many of our school staff in, have, you know, caregivers live in multi-person households with their parents and, and such, or they have children with medical issues. You know, we do care, and we would not do this. We would not be looking at opening the schools if we felt it was not safe. As a board member, as a community member, you know, you have my commitment. I'm ready to volunteer, help in any way, shape or form that I can. And we are ready to move forward. You know, the, the isolation that our youth are in is, is a real thing. The mental health, and I hear, you know, I have heard a lot about that. I've heard from, just from parents, from teachers, from teachers that are parents, that their children are saying, we want to go back. So just as, as we've already said, you know, we have cohorts that have been on campus. Things are going well, and we just really, you know, want the community to know that, to understand that. And that also that the, at the district, you know, just like with staffing and safe protocol and so forth, we're going to keep evaluating this. This is a work in progress. I know it's, you know, easy for me to say, right? But daily, 24/7, our superintendent and our district staff are all, and we're all in this together. Thank you, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I can only reiterate the gratitude and, and deep feeling we have for all of the work that has gone into getting our schools ready and also to validate the fear and, and uncertainty that remains. We know it's real. And to, to reiterate what other board members have said, I think it's great that we continue to hear from teachers, from community members, from school employees, and also from parents, and now from teachers to, from students also. So I'm especially grateful today for the response from Public Health, which was a formal validation of this readiness. And I'm very grateful that we have this opportunity to absolutely set a date. But as has been said by Ms. Maldonado and others in our letter, we believe that there's a companion piece to this, and that is vaccination of school employees. And our letter was very clear that we understand that there are lots of reasons. And we stated why teachers and other school employees should move to the top of the priority list, regardless of how many vaccines there are available. And we offered ourselves as partners to Public Health and to the county supervisors in saying, one, that we will turn our school sites into vaccination sites for school employees. Two, that we will create priority lists for school employee vaccinations. And you heard Ms. Capps share some of her preferences, but we will do that. We will communicate and even schedule employee vaccinations. We are partners, and we're just asking that they either pause or weave into the regular schedule a time for school employees to be vaccinated. And I believe it can be done quickly and efficiency, efficiently. I also want to mention that I, as Ms. Alvarez did about the COVID-19 plans, and we're looking at them and approving them tonight as part of the school safety plans. They are very comprehensive, and they're very well-written. And I would recommend that we make them available to parents and really, and push them out into the community, school by school, so people can see exactly the work that's been done because it is comprehensive. And finally, Ms. Maldonado, I would just invite you and me to think very carefully about a specific plan to return to in-person board meetings. And that's it for me. If there are no other comments, this board has been meeting for 3 hours and 15 minutes. I'd like to take a 10-minute break now. We will reconvene right at 8:25. Thank you. So we now go back to the original agenda, and we'll take up with item D, the acceptance of donations for February 9th, 2021. And I must state that we are so grateful for the generous donations from individuals and organizations. Board members, may I have a motion to accept these donations? Please say so with your voice.
So moved with gratitude.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. And a second?
A second?
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
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 And this motion passes unanimously. We now move on to the consent agenda to approve items that are generally routine and not likely to require any lengthy discussion. So first of all, I would like to find out if there are any items that board members would like to discuss in, discuss further before approving. Ms. Capps?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the item numbers, but I'd like to pull the, the contracts. And I would like to pull the, I'm just speaking shorthand here, the window operations. I'm, I'm struggling to find my agenda after coming back from that short break.
Okay. And, thank you. So I have those, and let me see, I can...
The Window Rehabilitation Project at Santa Barbara High School?
Yes.
Okay.
Were there any others that need to be discussed before putting them back on the agenda? Consent agenda?
Ms. Ford?
Yes?
I'd like to pull the LifeLock contract, please.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll start by, I think it would be best to just understand what the public comments are on the consent agenda before we go back to discuss them as board members. So, Ms. Trujillo, can you tell us where on the consent agenda we have public comments and proceed with them?
Thank you, President Ford. We have 15 public comments on item E6, which is the ratification of revenue generating contracts, grants, and memorandum of understanding under 10K. This specifically talking about the Planned Parenthood contract. I'll start naming the first five. First name is Bianca Orozco, Daniel Bernal Otero, Julie Mickelberry, Jenny Spurling, Marushka Besseri. And I'll start with Ms. Bianca Orozco. Ms. Bianca does not appear to be online, so I will go on to... Daniel Bernal? Mr. Bernal, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Bernal, can you hear us?
Hi, hello, yeah.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Daniel Bernal, and I am really excited to be here tonight speaking in favor of the mutual understanding agreement between Planned Parenthood and the San Barbara Unified School District. As it is proven, the best way to mitigate all sorts of risky consequences that are associated with early and risky sexual behavior is to provide accurate and factual sexual education for children and teenagers, especially from an early age. And I believe this is exactly what this agreement does. It not only uses that as its solid foundation, but it builds on it. It understands that we have a need as a society to create individuals that are healthy and that are health-conscious. Sorry. As well as understanding that we need the right people, or health providers and their educators, to be providing this kind of information. So I believe that we need to understand that this is just not an issue of education, but instead it's a public health matter. And that's exactly what this agreement or memorandum of understanding does. Put these two things together and work towards creating, or better, just making sure that our children or kids have the resources they need to just be functional members of society. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Mickelberry. Can you please unmute yourself?
There we go. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak out in support of this MOU. Again, my name is Julie Mickelberry. I'm a proud parent of an eighth grader who will be attending San Marcos High School next fall. I strongly encourage the board to approve the MOU with Planned Parenthood to ensure that Santa Barbara High Schools receive the resources and support that they need to deliver high-quality sex education to Santa Barbara's teens. You know, young people deserve honest, accurate sex education that provides the information they need to protect their health and to make healthy choices. And that's what I want for my child and their peers. And I'm encouraged that the district is seeking outside expertise and support from Planned Parenthood. This partnership will, will ensure our teens receive instruction that is medically accurate, that's LGBTQ-inclusive, free of judgment, and ultimately compliant with the California Healthy Youth Act. I want my child to develop the skills they need for a lifetime of good health, including the ability to have healthy relationships, to celebrate difference, to be a good ally to those who are marginalized, and to love themselves for who they are. And I believe that public schools have a responsibility in the social, emotional development. So I'm grateful that the district is taking the necessary steps to ensure all teens will have access to quality sex education. So if you can't tell, I am in strong favor of the MOU, and I thank you all very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have Jenny Spurling.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, board members. My name is Jenny, and I'm here tonight to strongly encourage you to approve the MOU between Planned Parenthood and Santa Barbara Unified. For the past two years, I've been conducting research to prove by SB Unified District. And tonight, I offer you all evidence-based findings from this work focusing on sex ed in our community, specifically drawing on interviews and classroom observations with our local youth in a secondary school here in town. I've witnessed Planned Parenthood come and talk to our youth in high school health class, specifically addressing birth control methods. I watched them use gender-neutral language and teach in inclusive ways. There was no indoctrination of specific values over others. Instead, they encouraged open communication with students' parents and guardians if students could. They started the session with clear transparency, letting students know that they were there to inform them of all the methods and options. They tell students that they are not there to tell them to or not to have sex, or to tell them what birth control methods to use, if they even choose to do so. These community health educators are highly trained in content and instruction that is critical in our schools, and it's done so in ways that are rooted in equity. Their pedagogy is trauma-informed, culturally relevant, respectful, and approached in age-appropriate and medically accurate ways. When I asked students what the most important or helpful topic covered in sex ed was, many responded with Planned Parenthood. They highlighted how informative and relevant the session was, how they really value knowing their options, especially those available in their local community. Students wanted more than just one session. They want to learn about consent, unhealthy relationships. They want to know about the emotional and negative consequences and how that might interfere with their sports or even schoolwork. They want more time to ask their questions because they know that it's critical and prepares them to have control over their bodies and lives. This is where the MOU with Planned Parenthood's expertise plays a pivotal role. We must listen to our youth and prioritize their concerns and needs in order to better inform and therefore empower them to make healthy choices in their relationships and futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Marushka Besseri.
Hello, sister board members and Superintendent Maldonado. Thank you for your time. My name is Marushka Besseri, and I'm a psychologist with specialties in clinical, family, and forensic psychology. I serve on the Executive Board of Directors for the Santa Barbara Young Democrats, and we are here today to speak in favor of the initiative between Planned Parenthood and the school district in providing effective sex education to students. Sex ed is not about encouraging youth to have sex. Rather, it is an avenue to provide reliable and age-appropriate sex and health-related information. Research consistently demonstrates that providing this education actually decreases rates of sexual activity and that failing to provide accurate information or access to safe and culturally sensitive resources leads to higher risk for premature sex, unwanted pregnancies, and STIs. The type and manner in which information is conveyed can mean the difference between a lifelong stigmatization of our students' thoughts, feelings, behaviors, and experiences versus empathetic acceptance and understanding. Empathy typically leads to increased self-esteem, which assists with positive gains in educational and social development. Oftentimes, when parents attempt to explain aspects of sex to their kids, it can be met with embarrassment and an unwillingness to engage in meaningful conversation. However, youth who report having positive conversations with parents, legal guardians, and/or trusted allies are more likely to delay sex, have fewer partners, and use effective forms of birth control. It is essential that youth engage in discussions regarding normal biological and developmental changes, what is and what is not consent, and awareness about diverse sexual orientations and gender identities, and how to inclusively provide and receive support. There are many students who have unfortunately experienced some sort of unhealthy sexual experience. Often, lack of support in this area leads to negative behaviors such as self-harm, substance abuse, truancy, familial discord, and increased risky sexual activity. Preventative and proactive measures are far more successful than reactive measures. SB Young Democrats believe that we should promote healthy and safe learning opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next five speakers are Eva Catalan, Olivia Carranza, Sheridan Rosenberg, Gloria Soto, Barbara Berestini, and Bianca Orozco. I will, I will start with Olivia Carranza.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Olivia Carranza, and I'm a mother of three girls. Parents are the biggest influence in their children's education, and it's no difference with their decisions about sex. Youth who report having positive conversations with a trusted adult about sex are more likely to delay sex and make better choices. It is critical that parents learn this information as well in order to stay involved in these conversations. As a parent tonight, I ask the board that whoever you choose to become a partner to teach sexual education classes and instruction to make sure that this partner involves the parents on getting the same information that the youth is getting access to. Please make sure we all become a team to help the youth to stay healthy and safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Eva Catalan is not online, so I'm going to loop back with her. Next, we have Sheridan Rosenberg.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. So Laura, it says right here on the district website that you're the director, or perhaps you were a recent director, for the Planned Parenthood Action Fund. I view that as a conflict of interest. I mean, it's kind of right there on its face. This is nothing more or less than Planned Parenthood having an opportunity to engage in a relationship with the district to leverage it for fundraising. And I think that's really inappropriate. Not only that, I think it's time to sort of point out that this is like an F minus in risk assessment. When are you going to learn? You're Pablo Sweeney, employed by the Matt Academy Foundation nonprofit. You have Matef Harimakis. You got him on campus, but he was able to come back and still be around students through the NGO, whether they're a nonprofit or not is irrelevant, Ethnic Studies Now. Now you have this. I looked at the scope of work, right there on the front page of the scope of work. It says they're going to be collecting demographic information. They're also going to be doing questionnaires and surveys. It doesn't matter if parents can opt out or not. This is data mining. You, I really do not think that you have a right to bring in a third-party provider to do data mining. This is wildly a foul of FERPA and probably HIPAA as well. The second thing is, Kate, I want to direct this to you. I don't know if you remember, it was over a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago. My daughter's boyfriend had to take a health class in order to graduate, so he took it in summer school. And remember when I came up to you privately on the dais, and you and I had a little chat about one of the Planned Parenthood teachers who came in, it doesn't matter that he was supervised, he was totally inappropriate with these kids. He was droning on and on about his personal struggles with a porn addiction. Come on. Now, if what you want to do is engage Planned Parenthood to at least be a resource for teachers, you're enough. Don't bring them around the kids. Enough is enough.
I'm, thank you. Our next speaker is Gloria Soto.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Gloria Soto. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for Planned Parenthood California Central Coast and Planned Parenthood Central Coast Action Fund. Today, I'm calling to support the memorandum of understanding between Planned Parenthood California Central Coast and the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Young people deserve age-appropriate, medically accurate information and answers to their questions without being shamed or judged. Access to comprehensive sexual education can help youth foster healthy relationships and make informed, thoughtful decisions. Approving the MOU between SBUSD and PPCCC will support Santa Barbara High School students in making the decisions necessary to build a strong and healthy future, and it will support the district in complying with the state law. We need to ensure that any curriculum taught at SBUSD meets the needs of all students. That means the curriculum must be inclusive of all gender identities and sexual orientations. Planned Parenthood, as the largest provider of sexual education in the country, offers programming that aligns with state law and ensures that every student is represented. When it comes to schools, Planned Parenthood agrees that sex education is best delivered by teachers. The approval of the MOU between PPCCC and SBUSD will provide teachers with additional support and resources to provide the highest quality sex education to high school students in the district. Santa Barbara teens deserve access to the tools they need to stay healthy and safe. Sex education promotes honest dialogue about love, relationships, and sex, and it improves community health and well-being. Education equity is health equity, and at Planned Parenthood, we firmly believe that all people from all diverse backgrounds deserve access to high-quality sex education and health services. Your education, like your health, is your future, no matter who you are or where you come from, which is why we are in support of this MOU and ask that it be passed tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Baristini.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Dear Santa Barbara District Board and Superintendent Maldonado, I'm here to bring to the public's attention that you have once again operated with a lack of transparency, which shows our community that you do not respect us or represent us. Last year, there was a grassroots movement that was spearheaded for the purpose of getting your attention and hearing how we stood as a community on the district adopting the curriculum Teen Talk. In spite of the 400 people that showed up at meetings and the 700 some signatures opposing Teen Talk, you ignored us and bulldozed us and gave us your own agenda to sexualize and broom our children. Now you're making an alliance with the biggest abortion provider, Planned Parenthood. You want them to teach our children in the classrooms? Do parents know about this? Do we trust Planned Parenthood? No, we don't. Where has this been talked about? This again is not transparent. And why have you buried this agenda tonight? It was so hard to find. You know this is a highly sensitive subject, and it leads children to the doorsteps of abortion centers. No, you do not bring abortion providers on campuses to build relationships with minors and 12-year-olds. Abortions take life from babies. This is a very big problem for me and thousands of people in this community, and you are not respecting our convictions. I want to know, how do you sleep at night? In this agreement, you are planning to sign tonight with Planned Parenthood, the public should know that Planned Parenthood will provide trained health educators and have charge over education sessions that would be Teen Talk. This is a conflict of interest. They will be able to collect personal and private data on our children and make assessments on their health and sex behavior. This is all hidden behind health. They just want to dig in and find out about our children. They do not have the right to do that, and parents don't know about this, or they would be here on the Zoom call. The schools will work hand-in-hand with Planned Parenthood, providing personal space for programming. One example is giving them private space for youth and staff to discuss sensitive issues. And takes over the job of parents. Thank you.
Next, our next speaker is Eva Catalan. Can you please unmute yourself? Okay, I will loop back to her. Our next five speakers are Elvia Salazar, Gerardo Lorenz, Betsy Gray, Carla Nefell, and Ian Buick. And we'll start with Elvia Salazar. The Salazar is not online, or I'm not able to find her. I will go with Gerardo Lorenz. Mr. Lorenz, can you hear us?
Si, ustedes me escuchan?
Ah, si, claro. Puede empezar.
Disculpe, ¿me escuchan ustedes a mí?
Si, si lo escuchamos. Puede empezar.
Okay, muchas gracias. Mi nombre es Gerardo Lorenz. He estado escuchando comentarios basados en miedo y en desinformación, y esto es muy lamentable para nuestra sociedad. A todas las personas que participan en estos foros, les invito primero a informarse. Yo participo esta ocasión expresando mi apoyo a la Ley de California para una juventud saludable, mejor conocida como Chaya por sus siglas en inglés, y a la Asociación entre el Distrito Escolar de Santa Barbara y Planned Parenthood California Costa Central. Como padre, reconozco que cada adolescente tiene derecho y merece información correcta, inclusiva, y apropiada según su edad sobre temas de salud sexual y reproductiva, sobre relaciones saludables, métodos anticonceptivos, entre otros temas, y tienen derecho a hacer preguntas sin sentir vergüenza, que se les juzgue como personas adultas a las que no se les puede tener confianza. Hablar de estos temas para algunas familias a veces puede ser incómodo, y aunque en el hogar se pueden enseñar los valores, sé que en la escuela la ley requiere adolescentes que aprendan sobre temas de sexualidad, y creo que la asociación con Planned Parenthood, las maestras y maestros podrán contar con el apoyo de personas expertas en estos temas, especialmente ahora que su profesión como maestras y maestros se ha vuelto más difícil por la pandemia. Eso es todo. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Our next speaker is Betsy Gray.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Gray. You can hear me? Yes. Thank you for this opportunity to share with all of you on the school board. I realize the God of the Bible may not be in your purview, as he has been systematically excluded from public meetings. However, he is among us, because there are many on this call tonight who have invited him to be here. The tagline on your board email is "Every child, every chance, every day." This is such a good thing, as God takes children very, very seriously. In the Bible, it says, Jesus said to his disciples, "Things that make people fall into sin are bound to happen." But how terrible for the one who makes them happen. It would be better for him if a large millstone were tied around his neck and he were thrown into the sea than for him to cause one of these little ones to sin. So watch what you do. In conclusion, I passionately submit that Planned Parenthood is not the correct choice to instruct our precious children. Planned Parenthood stops the beating hearts of a half a million children every year. We cannot trust them with this instruction. I pray for those who have ears to hear would hear this and take it seriously. Lastly, I'd like to add, having heard some of the public comments earlier, people with differing opinions that may not align with the current politically correct narrative should be heard and welcomed in a free country, allowed by our First Amendment of free speech in our Bill of Rights, and embraced and honored. Thank you so much for all you do for our community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carla Nufeld.
Can you, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Carla Nufeld, and I'm here to express my enthusiastic support for the district adoption of the MOU with Planned Parenthood. As a parent of a middle schooler, I'm eager for my child and his peers to receive factual, inclusive, and comprehensive information about healthy relationships, sex, and sexuality, as well as emotional and physical safety. Planned Parenthood has been providing this kind of education to adolescents and adults for decades, and I trust them to facilitate the kinds of learning experiences that support children to make healthy, dignified choices for themselves and with each other. I'm well aware that we are our children's first teachers and believe that regular conversations about these topics is essential. However, we must be realistic in recognizing that there are countervailing forces at work in our children's development. Pornography has quickly become a primary source of quote-unquote "education" about sex and sexuality for children and adolescents, and unhealthy portrayals of sexual relationships abound in movies and TV. So our children deserve honest, realistic, and age-appropriate information about these topics. When schools remain silent, or worse, adopt a harmful and reductive, abstinence-only approach to sex education, we do our children a grave disservice. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to get Eva Catalan, and I will loop back with her again, and I will go with Mr. Ian.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Hello, Superintendent Maldonado, members of the board. My name is Ian Bauke, and I'm the Director of Advocacy and Policy for Santa Barbara Young Democrats, as well as a K-12 alumni of SB Unified Public Schools. I'm here to add my voice to the overwhelming community support for the district's memorandum of understanding with Planned Parenthood of California Central Coast to provide comprehensive and inclusive sexual health education as required by the California Healthy Youth Act. High-quality sexual health education directly leads to better community health outcomes, and failing to provide students adequate sexual health education exposes them to higher risk for premature sex, unwanted pregnancies, and STIs. And I really just want to reiterate that point based off some of the previous public comment. High-quality and inclusive sexual health education reduces, time and time again, proven research reduces the likelihood and the frequency and the onset of teens having sex and the rate at which they're doing so in a risky and unhealthy way. I think it's extremely important to emphasize that Planned Parenthood is the nation's largest and most respected provider of both reproductive healthcare and sexual education. And local participants in Planned Parenthood's of California Central Coast sexual education programs overwhelmingly report positive, helpful, and inclusive and respectful experiences with the program. Planned Parenthood's focus on inclusion means local LGBTQ students will have access to a relevant sexual health education that actively addresses historic inequities in sexual health education that lead to poor outcomes based off not having an inclusive curriculum. And this focus on diversity will improve students and other students' understanding and appreciation of sexual and gender diversity among their peers, setting them up for more positive attitudes in relationships. It's critical sex education is provided by specialized educators so students get the highest quality information and feel comfortable participating and asking questions. I'll say, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Eva Catalan. Ms. Catalan, can you hear us? I'm not able to connect with Ms. Catalan. I will try Ms. Elvia Salazar. I don't see Ms. Salazar online either. And that concludes public comment on this item, President Ford.
And it includes any public comment from consent agenda?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So let's go back over the three items. E6 is Planned Parenthood. We had a number of comments. Very grateful to the public for those. Board members, are there any comments that you would like to add or questions?
Ms. Ford, President Ford, yes. Yeah, thank you. I pulled this item precisely to have this kind of conversation and just believing that there should be transparency and community involvement in this decision. I'm happy to recuse myself from the vote. I am no longer on the Board of Planned Parenthood, but I did proudly serve until 2019, along with about 10 other boards that I've served on here locally in state and national, which is, in my view, what you want from a school board member, someone who's involved in their community. So I will recuse myself on the vote for this, even though it's not required.
Thank you so much. Any other board members that would like to speak to E6 Planned Parenthood? Yes, or, yes, Planned Parenthood first, please. Go ahead, Ms. Munoz.
Thank you, President Ford. Along with, you know, I appreciated all the comments. We did also, of course, receive many letters regarding this issue. I'm grateful to Ms. Capps for pulling it so that we could discuss this and be transparent and, you know, be receptive to our students, staff, and community. I did have a question about this, about the partnership with Planned Parenthood, and I would like to ask how Planned Parenthood would be able to support our health ed teachers who would be teaching Teen Talk. who would be teaching teen talk. I didn't know if they're on hand to answer questions.
Ms. Anne Roundy-Harder or Ms. Sean Carey will answer.
Hi, this is Anne Roundy-Harder. I'm not able to get my video going for some reason. But I'm happy to speak to this issue to clarify, oh, here we go, sorry. Good evening, everybody. I'm happy to clarify, there's been a conflation and a misunderstanding around teen talk middle school and the Planned Parenthood Central Coast MOU. So I'm happy to clarify that. The MOU is written specifically for grades nine through 12. The teen talk middle school curriculum is only for grades seven and eight. So the two are not the same issue. The teen talk middle school curriculum is through a publishing company called Health Connected, who has already trained six of our teacher, excuse me, eight of our teachers. And we hope more will take advantage of the upcoming trainings in March. So this is not including the middle school curriculum. It's not including the middle school classrooms. It is specifically for our high school classrooms. And there are multiple reasons for that, one of them being that we do have this close partnership this year with Health Connected in offering the teen talk middle school curriculum, which was adopted and approved by this board. And it was felt that due to that close partnership with those trained health educators, that we did not need that in the space for Planned Parenthood at this time when we are devoting ourselves to the teen talk middle school curriculum rollout for the first time. And it's not to say that we don't fully appreciate a partnership with Planned Parenthood Central Coast. I want to make clear that it's, it's not due for any lack of appreciation for services they can offer to those grades. But at this time, it did not seem to make the most sense for us. And this was in full understanding with Planned Parenthood Central Coast as well as to that reason.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. And I certainly, you know, see the value of, of Planned Parenthood. For years, you know, providing accurate medical care and information, annual exams, pregnancy tests, and, and, and such. And certainly in terms of also promoting, you know, healthy relationships and support for young people and women and men and LGBT community, for example, in, in terms of being inclusive, especially with those without, you know, financial means, without private insurance, especially in this day and age, but so much also 30 years ago when I was a client there myself. And just, you know, I certainly am supportive of, of Planned Parenthood and all that they offer and what they provide for both students and, as was said earlier, in terms of the opportunity for parent education. Thank you. No further questions.
Thanks. So we'll go on to the next item where there were questions. Ms. Alvarez, what are your questions on the ratification of the contract with Norton LifeLock that will allow you to vote for it on the consent agenda?
Thank you, President Ford, and thank you to Dr. Beckio and Ms. Cheté for answering all my questions. I appreciate that. Dr. Beckio, would you give us a brief summary of why this is needed and the benefits that we will get from this contract? And Ms. Cheté, would you remind us the funding source for this contract? Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Alvarez, for the opportunity to clarify on this particular contract. So if you remember our second round of surveillance testing in January, CISC, whose self-insured schools of California is our insurance provider, partnered with Quest Diagnostics. And so we switched over to using Quest Diagnostics for that reason. CISC did require that we submit the social security numbers for billing purposes, which we did through a secure encrypted server. Unfortunately, the test kits got sent with social security numbers in them. And so we, out of an abundance of caution, decided that we quickly needed to contract with LifeLock so that each of those employees that received a test kit with that number in them could engage with LifeLock to provide that identity theft protection. And, you know, so either, it was either CISC or Quest made the, made the error of sending these as, as the unique identifiers. And so we do have our legal counsel, I'll let you know, we have our legal counsel following up with CISC. He actually just was on the phone with them today to get, we have filed a claim to get reimbursed for this cost because it was their error in sending full social security numbers through the mail. So we'll follow up and let you know how that goes. I, I do believe that the funding source was CARES Act. And I think if Ms. Cheté wants to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was CARES Act funding.
And Dr. Beckio, you also sent a letter to all employees informing them of this service, is that right?
That's correct. We've sent to all the, we know all the employees that received these. They've all received the activation code. We're going to continue to follow up with those that haven't taken advantage of this opportunity and, and get them signed up as, as members.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we will now go on to item E10, the Window Rehabilitation Project. Your questions and concerns, Ms. Capps?
Thank you. Yeah, similarly, I just wanted to bring this forward, given it's a, it's a large ticket price. It's something I know we've been talking about for probably years, Mr. Vazilini, these window replacements. But I just thought you could perhaps speak to it and particularly if there is a chance or an opportunity before we move forward to bring it to the Historical Landmark Commission. I know, I believe it's not required, but given the community interest and the, the, the historical interest of these windows at Santa Barbara High and also including Santa Barbara Junior High, just wanted to give you the, the floor to talk about that potential. Thank you.
Good evening again, Ms. Capps. Yes, I think that we've done our due diligence. One of the things that we did is we hired a retired architect that is the president of the Pearl Chase Society, which is, as many people know, is a society that's, their vision is to keep the historical components of Santa Barbara in good condition. However, given that we have had some correspondence recently and the fact that we didn't go, you know, it is a cursory review by the Landmarks Commission, but given what we've heard today with some concerned citizens, I think that we probably should pull this tonight. And that's what my recommendation would be. And that we, we give those people a chance to voice their opinion and we also schedule a time to get this before the Landmarks Commission and just kind of validate everything we do before we do the first one.
Well, I appreciate that suggestion on your part and it's consistent with how wonderful you are to work with. Thank you so much. And I guess when you do bring it back, more of a justification of the cost, given, you know, it does, it, it does look just on paper as rather expensive for these windows. So if we can go into those details, I think that that would be helpful for the board and also for concerned community members. So thank you for that suggestion. I certainly support that.
Certainly. I think what we'll do is, is when it's time to, when it's appropriate to come back, we'll bring it back on the action agenda so that we can have a discussion about it for its approval.
Sounds great.
Okay, thank you. Board members, listen carefully. I am going to ask for a motion. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended, which means that E10 has been pulled and Ms. Capps has recused herself for E6?
I so moved.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. And a second?
A second?
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. And all in favor, signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This motion passes and so does Consent Agenda today. So we now go on to the action agenda and the first item is the contract with the fleet. The Fleet Management Enterprise, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. Ms. Cheté?
Thank you, President Ford, and good evening, board members. Tonight, I'm going to ask for your approval on the replacement of 23 heavy-to-medium utility trucks and three hybrid sedans. Next slide, please. This is just an overview. You've seen this before, so I won't go into it. But our total fleet is 84 and our average vehicle's about 12.4 years old. Next slide. There was some confusion or questions regarding the county, what the county's doing in hybrids and electric and what we are talking about doing. And I think this picture illustrates it pretty well that these are not an equal comparison. We have half tons, three-quarter tons, ton pickups compared to the, what the county is now using as these smaller hybrid models. We have researched the hybrid, when will hybrids come in these heavier vehicles? And we're looking at 22, 23. And when we can, when these trucks become available, we will start to look at them as a hybrid. Also, these, the lease is a five-year lease. If we are, if avail, excuse me, if the trucks are available within between that, that five years, within those five years, that we can switch them out and go hybrid even on these, even though we're starting off with gas. Next slide, please. So this is what we're asking for in Phase 1, 27 vehicles, three gas, small pickups to hybrid sedans. And as mentioned, 24 medium-to-heavy-duty, old, fuel-efficient, less efficient fuel vehicles. And with just swapping these out, even though they're gas, they still will help the carbon by 63%. Next slide. Phase 2, we'll do 30 vehicles, 14 gas will be replaced by 14 hybrids. And then again, we have 16 medium-to-heavy vehicles. If the hybrid is available, we will then replace them with hybrid. If not, we will continue with gas, but we will still save on the emissions. Next slide. Then Phase 3, our final phase, will be 11 gas vehicles replaced with hybrids and replace 14 medium-heavy-duty trucks again with either hybrid or gas, whatever is available. Next slide, please. So this is just a review. You've seen this before. Our overall savings on CO2 is about 65% or removing 27 vehicles off the road. Next slide. That's, we're not supposed to see that sign. Next slide. So if, we'll go to questions now, but I, what I am asking for is approval of 27 total vehicles, three hybrid, and 24 heavy-duty gas vehicles. So I'll take any questions you have.
Just one, I just want to clarify, Ms. Cheté. Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments on this item, President Ford.
Thank you. With that, I think it was a very clear presentation. Board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Capps?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to thank Ms. Cheté for doing the research and coming back with a hybrid plan. I'm pleased and happy to support this. I just firmly believe that especially when we are entrusted with spending taxpayer dollars, that we need to be looking at every sustainability option. And, and you've done that now and I really appreciate and I look forward to when, like, the fact that our city has electric buses, we can have electric, not just hybrid, but actually electric trucks. I understand that they're not available now, so I just am grateful to, to you for the work and excited to support this action item. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. So with that comment, is there a motion to approve the five-year lease agreement between Santa Barbara Unified School District and Enterprise Fleet?
Sorry.
Oh, all right. Ms. Munoz?
President? Yes, yeah, I have, I have some questions.
Orally for me during this meeting, ladies, thanks.
I'm sorry?
Just be sure you say something. I can't see you raise your hand.
Okay, certainly, certainly. I have a question, you know. I, I know, Ms. Cheté, thank you for, you know, getting the data for us, you know, the, the PowerPoint that you presented. I have a question about how much, you know, both in terms of miles per gallon, right? That, the efficiency of the trucks. And also, I wanted to know, you know, if you could review that again. And then also, how much would we be saving with, with the lease of the heavy-duty, you know, for the heavy-duty vehicles? What would be like the, the, you know, the overall amount that we would be saving?
On Phase 1, it'd be $36,000 each year. That's in Phase 1. Depending on what we do in Phase 2 and 3 will determine how much the savings is.
Okay, so depending on Phase 2 and 3 with the vehicles, with the gas vehicles?
Yeah, and the type of vehicles. It will be, and depending on how much money we get for the, when we sell the other vehicles. So it has, it has a relationship, right? We're going to sell vehicles, that's going to be applied to the lease. So whatever we get for the vehicles, we will apply that to the, the new lease. But the Phase 1, we have done all the math on that right now and we will, we will save about $36,000 a year, each year.
A year, so times five years, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess my concern is that, you know, as Ms. Capps and I had brought up in the last meeting, is that, you know, the heavy pickup trucks and, and the vans are not available in hybrid currently, correct?
That's correct.
So I'm concerned about, you know, also like just being, feeling responsible for the taxpayer dollars and what's most practical, you know, when I was employed with the county and I'm certainly familiar with the hybrid sedans and, and such and, and the, the Ford SUVs and so forth. So I'm just wondering, you know, if, about the timing of this decision in terms of, you know, going into this. And then also, I wondered about, you know, if the gas vehicles are available in hybrids, how about starting there? You know, how about starting there so that if we have, I get, we have 28 vehicles, correct? 28, sorry, 28 sedans and six, a combination of sedans and minivans?
Yes, so the, what we did is we did it by need. We have a need in facilities for, in the first phase. We have a lot of the bigger vans for ASBs, the Associate Student Body, that they use for athletics and things like that at the high schools. That also, those large passenger vans are not in hybrid, so available in hybrid. So we're doing, we're, we have to do a combination. For example, we have to look at what our needs are and what is available. When we did some further research and asked the facilities team, you have these small Ford little pickups you're driving around, do you need those Ford pickups? We can turn those into sedans and do hybrids. And they were like, yeah, we don't need the pickups. So as we go through our whole fleet and as the phases come up, we will evaluate all of our vehicles. I've been speaking to food service and we're talking about, do we really need huge, large catering vans? Or can we get, use some, maybe an SUV, a hybrid SUV instead? So, but Phase 1 has been determined that these are the vehicles that we need to replace at this time.
Okay, so just to, you know, just so that I understand it correctly. So the, the 27, Phase 1, the 27 vehicles, they're all, you know, what, like 10 years old? Or, you know, just in terms of the breakdown?
Well, the average vehicle is 12.4 years old. But a lot of them are 15, like the half-cargo van is 15.9 years. We have the three-quarter tons that were night, are 19 years old. So we took the oldest ones to get them off the road because their carbon footprint is higher. And it's time, it's time to move those trucks onward. They don't have any of the safety items on them and that's not good for our employees. So that's how we made the decision. So that's how we made the decision. And I have Marina and Laura from Enterprise to answer the question about the mileage. You asked a question about the mileage?
Certainly, but what I'm, yes, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out, you know, how many of the twenty-seven vehicles in phase one, how many of them are, you know, fifteen years old and, you know, ready to, to move on?
Well, I would say that seventeen of the twenty-seven, and correct me if I'm wrong, Laura and Marina, because I'm, I don't remember quite often, but I'm looking at the list and there's three-quarter ton pickups that, there's seventeen of them that are nineteen years and older. So I would think that those, is that correct, Marina? That's, they're the first ones we're doing. So those right off the bat are that one of the oldest ones we've done. And we got any grid instead of pickups too that are twenty years old.
Right, so I'm just wondering, for example, you know, just, just throwing it out there, thinking out of the box, if the ones that are older, right? If, if we included those in phase one and then some of the vehicles to change over to hybrid so that overall, we would have, you know, vehicles that are more sustainable and affordable?
So that's what I think, what, what we're trying to do with the, out of the twenty-seven, seventeen are the oldest vehicles. Okay, and then we took nine smaller vehicles and turned them into hybrids. Those are the three hybrid sedans. So we're, we're replacing twenty-four gas vehicles and three hybrid to equal twenty-seven.
Okay, does, you know, I was just trying to figure out if we could be more creative in terms of having, you know, more of the hybrid sedans being that they are available. And also replacing the heavy-duty trucks that are, you know, granted, or gas guzzlers and are, you know, don't have the safety features.
Laura, or Marina, do you, do you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, of course. Thank you so much, board members and Superintendent Maldado. So we, we did a big evaluation of the fleet and the majority of the vehicles that we're placing are over fifteen years old. You know, missing essential safety items and they are averaging a little less than ten miles per gallon. If we replace this fleet that is heavily used, especially by facilities, these vehicles are being used every single day, driving around the campuses. And if we replace this fleet, the miles per gallon is going to increase significantly. And we're going to increase the safety amongst the fleet as well. These vehicles by the manufacturers aren't expected to be released for quite a few years, especially the three-quarter ton trucks. It's not very, it's not foreseen in the next two to three years. So this is a big step in improving the carbon footprint for the fleet. And then within the next few years, um, we would have the option to flip these out into hybrids once they become available. But we don't see that coming for the, at least three to four years for the three-quarter ton trucks and those one-ten trucks and more heavy-duty vehicles.
Yeah, just to piggyback, board member Munoz, I think the other important part that Ms. Chetay mentioned was you're not, you're not married to the vehicles for five or more years. So worst-case scenario, you make a decision today that has an immediate impact on the carbon footprint, on the offset, on the overall savings for the district, the safety for the faculty and the students. Uh, and then in twelve months, we find out that there's some alternative electric or hybrid option and we replace them with, with those, right? So the reason, like was mentioned before, we identified these particular vehicles is from a operational cost and a safety perspective. They are certainly the district's most glaring area of opportunity, and they seem to be the vehicles in the most use, particularly with students not in schools right now. Um, so the, the twenty-seven vehicles were carefully thought about as far as why those are the ones we're looking to replace. And certainly, there's opportunity to replace as many more as you want in as near the future as you want to. So it's a very, very flexible plan. Um, and again, the, the reason that we picked the ones we did had less to do with electric, non-electric, and more to do with what currently is costing the district a lot of money. I mean, you're, you're hemorrhaging money and keeping these vehicles in service. And even in the conversations we've been having with Meg since October, you've lost transmissions on some of the vehicles we're talking about. That's a really, really expensive day, and we're trying to help you avoid having more of those in the future. So the proposal is, let's make a decision today that will have an immediate improvement given the options that are available. And then we'll continue to implement as much electric and hybrid options as we can as we move forward. Um, which is similar, we actually just got board approval to partner with the County of Santa Barbara today. We've been working with the Sheriff's Department there. And they're starting with fifty-four vehicles and all our gas engines, just because that's what's the lowest total cost of ownership for their application.
And then would the cost increase when these vehicles are available in hybrid? You know, where our, how much will our cost increase at that point?
It just depends on the cost of the vehicle. So, you know, the manufacturers are going to determine what the vehicles are, you know, what, what, what you can acquire them for and the incentives that they're willing to give you. And, and that will impact what your cost would be. So at this point, I can't tell you what it'll be because we don't have that information from the manufacturers. But I can tell you that today, um, the, the electric vehicles tend to have a higher initial cost given that they cost more than a gas engine.
But Ms. Clark, isn't it true that when we resell the vehicles that we're purchasing today? Or not today, but in the future, the fi, the ones we're in phase one, the resale value of those is high because those trucks are in high demand. And so we, we, we could possibly get as much as we purchased them for.
That is absolutely true. But that's absolutely true, yeah. So the, the projection would be that, you know, anywhere in that first twelve to sixty months, you would have enough equity in the vehicle to be able to turn it in and get a new one at potentially the same or less cost. But again, it all is, is situational on the particular vehicle type and the equity. But to Ms. Chetay's point, um, the, these leases are structured with the intent that you have the flexibility to get out of them as early as twelve months without owing money. And the, the way that that works is the district gets such a big incentive on the front end and we sell them so well on the back end that you have a lot of flexibility throughout the term.
Okay, I, I, in the interest of time, I really need to jump in here. I'm so appreciative of the comments and the questions and the information that's shared. And I think we can, if we have further questions as board members, we can come to Ms. Chetay. So I'd like to acknowledge the comments and questions and ask if there's a motion to approve the five-year lease agreement between Santa Barbara Unified School District and Enterprise Fleet Management.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Sure, I second.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. All in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Let's move on. Was there a question?
No, I, no, I just said thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Let's move on to the next action item, which I will turn over to Ms. Dr. Wagonick.
Good evening, uh, again, uh, Ms. Ford, Board and Ms. Malnado. I bring to you, um, the Second Amendment to the Agreement with the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Barbara. The School Resource Deputy Contract. This is a, an extension of the contract, um, which, uh, goes from November of twenty-twenty to June of twenty-twenty-one. So it extends those services. I will take your questions at this time.
I want to say thank you to Dr. Wagonick. She and I had a very lengthy conversation about this item. I appreciate your time and all the information that you provided. I, I feel much better about this item after speaking with you and the fact that this officers are trained before coming to campus on our procedures, our policies and anti-bias. And also that district representatives have a role in selecting the individual that will be on our campus. So I thank you for that information that you gave me. And I look forward to in the future discussing more this at length at future board meetings, but I do feel much better after speaking with you. So thank you for answering all my questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Alvarez. Terrific. And any other comments or questions?
Just, yes, just briefly, please, since I, I appreciate the approach of Ms. Alvarez that I know these items will, this item in particular will be discussed at greater length and in the interest of time. If I could just ask Dr. Wagonick to speak to that trainee because again, it was a, a request, um, from our Black student youth and from so many members in the community. So just, if you could just, for the sake of the public, I'm confident about it. But I, for the sake of the public, if you could just speak for a minute or so about that, I would be appreciative.
Absolutely. So one thing that, uh, as Ms. Alvarez mentioned, I, I shared with her that we put some expectations in place for, um, the school resource officers and deputies. And one being that they, they have certain training when they are working on the school campuses. One of those is implicit bias training. So the current, um, School Resource Deputy, Deputy Sean Hampton has had that anti-bias training or implicit bias training. And we have a commitment, um, from him and his supervisors that he'll participate in, uh, trainings, uh, going forward. And I did learn from Dr. Glazer that Deputy Hampton, um, actually, at her request, investigated and looked into de-escalation training. And, um, he along, um, then organized that and had their campus safety, for campus safety, participate in that de-escalation training with him. Which I was, that's the first I've ever heard of anything like that happening. He was already trained in de-escalation, but he brought it, um, to their staff. And then also, he's going to, um, be participating in a positive behavior interventions and support training with members of the administration and school counseling team at San Marcos High School. So those are the sorts of things that you can expect, um, going forward. So hopefully that answers your questions.
Excellent.
I make one more comment. Dr. Wagonick also explained to me that there's a very strong separation between this, um, resource officer and school administration. School administration, of course, is a hundred percent responsible for student issues, for student discipline. And there's that differentiation between these two entities. So thank you for clarifying that.
Absolutely.
Seeing no further comments, I would like to know if there's a motion from the board to approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement with the Board of Supervisors and the Santa Barbara Unified School District for School Resource Deputy.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Capps. And is there a second? Ms. Alvarez, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously. And now we will go on to continue into the reports. And I believe that takes us to, uh, Dr. Beckio, the first reading and sunshining of the California School Employees Association Proposal.
Thank you, Board President Ford. Uh, this item is, uh, before you tonight as a, as a, um, discussion item. It is our, um, California School Employees Association. Our, this is our labor union for our classified employees. It's their proposal for their contract negotiations with us this year. Uh, keep in mind, we are also with CSCA, as we are with SBTA, negotiating a, a full three-year contract. Um, that's why you'll see in the attachments, um, they have, uh, a lot of articles listed, probably twenty or so that that expresses their intention to negotiate, um, on those items, uh, this spring. And so this is before you tonight. Remember, you will have this come back on a public hearing at the next board meeting and an action item for your approval. And then we can begin negotiations with CSCA. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I, I do want to clarify with Ms. Trujillo that there are no public comments.
No public comments.
Board members, any questions or comments for Dr. Beckio?
No, thanks.
Seeing none, we will move on to number three, which is school safety plans, the first reading. Dr. Wagonick.
All right, um, thank you, Board. So I'm here to bring you the first reading of the Comprehensive School Safety Plans. These, uh, by, uh, California Education Code must be approved by March first of each year. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so school safety, this is just a, a conceptual representation of how we imagine or, or, or how we frame our work in school safety. It, it entails discipline and behavior. The physical security of, of students and staff and families, but also their emotional well-being. And then, um, the involvement of our community partners. Uh, next slide. So school safety plans, um, this slide shows you the components that a comprehensive school safety plan, um, has as required by the California Department of Education. Um, this year, um, we've added that last bullet point on the left side, which is the COVID safety plans. And they are, uh, in there as an appendix. Um, I do want to note that those COVID safety plans, um, as you, um, as they were submitted last week for the board meeting, um, will be updated with the approved plan. The district's approved plan as well as each school's, um, site COVID safety plan. So in general, the plans are divided into three parts. There's the cover packet, the school safety plan itself, which is specific to the individual school, and then the emergency operations plan. Next slide. So like anything, any program that we have, we actively practice the cycle of inquiry in, in regards to safety. And in these plans, um, you will see that administrators, uh, the principals primarily have examined their data related to safety. And, and those, uh, data can include suspensions, expulsions, information from California Healthy Kids Survey and, and other, um, metrics. Um, these, um, data identify areas of growth or change and, and helps, uh, the, help indicate the goals that schools set. Um, they create their plans and, and they implement programs to affect the changes that they're, they're looking for. And, um, that is then used to train students and staff and families. And finally, then execute the new way of doing business. So this co, this cycle is constant, and it's something that, uh, a number of years ago, we were missing. Um, but we really do try to actively practice this, um, cycle of inquiry with school safety. Uh, next slide, please. Um, in the document, as you examine them, you'll also find, uh, checklists and appendices that are part of the emergency operations. These are the, um, safety response protocols and other documents that school leaders refer to, uh, when an emergency occurs on their campus or in our, our community. So that's what those functional appendices, checklists. So that's what those functional appendices, checklists and school site appendices entail. Next slide, please. Okay, so a year ago, when I brought the 2020-21 safety plans to you for approval, we'd just begun hearing about the coronavirus and COVID. Little did we know what we did not know yet, that the pandemic would turn things upside down. And so as such, many of the schools, you will see, they had plans for, and had set goals for overall school safety. You'll see that they've really rolled those goals over into this year's plan because they are specific to when we are operating in quote "normal" conditions. Some of the activities sites and district planned to undertake a year ago have been put on pause, but others have moved forward. And then at the same time, much of the past year has been devoted to putting COVID safety measures in place. And so you see that reflected here. Some of the comprehensive school safety activities, those primary activities are, of course, the screening and monitoring of COVID at all school sites and district offices. So that's included the addition of Safety iPass for Crisis Go, parent access to the Crisis Go app, which was a goal that we had. So we've been able to do those things. Putting in place a multi-tiered system of support for behavior and emotional wellness during the pandemic, but also extending that beyond the pandemic. We are, it was about a year ago where the board asked us to look at revising your disciplinary guidelines, the ones that we use every day. And so there is a work group actively working on revising those guidelines, and we'll be bringing to you the, those to you in a couple of months. We will be practicing standard response protocols upon return to in-person learning. So just as we do at the beginning of each school year, usually in early September, when students return to school in person, we'll be holding safety drills to practice. And then finally, I do want to talk to the board about a plan that to me has always seemed to make more sense. And that is to shift our focus, or shift our cycle for these safety plans to a, a fall cycle, so that they will be approved in September and then run through to the next August, rather than do these safety plans in the middle of the year, put them more on a school year schedule. That is in keeping with California Education Code. It just says that the plans have to be approved each school year, no later than March 1st. Next slide. So what can you expect or what's next for Santa Barbara Unified in terms of safety plans? Of course, the use of Safety iPass through Crisis Go for the remainder of the pandemic. We do not anticipate that we're going to stop screening students, staff and visitors for COVID, at least until the second semester of next year. Next, we'll continually refine our emergency operations plan. We'll continue to practice our utilization of Crisis Go by staff and parents. We will integrate our emergency services agencies into the Crisis Go app. We were just starting to integrate local first responders into the use of Crisis Go when the pandemic hit. So we will be working with those agencies to get them on board with us. Of course, continuing to practice the, the standard reunification methods, so that if there's an emergency, families can quickly be reunited, re-unified with their children. Integration of our threat assessment protocols in the emergency operations plan. We have, as of last spring, a new threat assessment protocol. And so that'll be continued training of school sites and use of those protocols. And then finally, we will continue the integration of our school safety processes into the normal business cycle of the district. And, and that goes back to having our plans run from September to August of each year, so that we're constantly improving the culture around safety and school climate in our district. And with that, I will open it up to your questions. Oh, hold on for a moment. I do want to say that I am recommending that the board approve these plans at the next board meeting in two weeks. Thank you. Terrific. Thank you so much. Ms. Trujillo, are there any speakers for this item?
No speakers on this item.
Thanks so much. Well, all I will say is that I thought that these were really well done, really well organized. And as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I appreciated the COVID-19 health and safety plans that were attached to them. And I just, I just hope that we disseminate them widely because, especially in this environment, when people are fearful about a lot of things and wary and confused, these plans at least give us a real, a real map, a guideline for, for how to address every possible emergency. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Any other comments or are there questions?
A quick question from me. Yeah, Dr. Wagonick, I know that a key component to these plans being produced to the state is the parental involvement. And I just am curious how that's been managed. I would ima- imagine, I know parents are very much involved in the task forces for reopening and COVID safety plans. And so maybe that suffices, but if you could just speak to that, because again, I, I support that component of, of these safety plans and the requirement of the state to make sure that parents are involved.
I'd like to, thank you, Ms. Capps. I'd like to ask Mr. Rouse to put the Monroe Safety Plan up for us to view very quickly here. And while he's doing that, I'll say that these safety plans require the input of either the site council or a safety team. And those always include parents on them. And so, Mr. Rouse, if you'll go down to about, probably to page three, right there, stop, 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 stop. Okay, go, page three, please. No, oh, there you go. So the Safety Planning Committee members for Monroe are two teacher reps, the principal, the office manager and the school resource officer. But they also have a signature page that, that it would take us too much time to get through to. But you'll see that it'll be signed off by their school site council. And so for the parents who are out there, you can look and see which parent representatives are part of the formation of your individual school's safety plans. But that, that is very important to hear input from our families. And in high schools, they often have a student representative on that team as well.
Even better. Thank you for that.
Any other comments or comments?
Certainly. I was just going to make a comment. Thank you, Dr. Wagonick, for this. And then I appreciated also the information that's down in these for each individual school in terms of, you know, comparison through the years and such, and the involvement of the teachers and the parents and so forth named in there. So I, I appreciate it. It was very helpful to me and putting things in perspective.
And I, I want to say thank you to all the principals and their team for putting this together. I, I know from experience, it takes a lot of work. So thank you. I also had a conversation with Dr. Wagonick about the safety plans. I enjoyed reading all of them. The school's personality really comes out as you read their, their portion. So thank you. One, one quick question I did have. The goals that they list in the safety plan, I didn't get a full understanding of how they achieve these goals. And you don't have to answer that today. Perhaps you can send me an email on that. I know it's, I know it's getting late. So thank you.
You can definitely do that and, and and I will, yes. But, but real quickly, the goal, the, the principals often in conjunction with writing their single plans, will look at the data and decide which areas to focus on for safety at their school in that year and then set the goals accordingly and decide what, it, it goes back to that cycle of improvement I talked about. So that's really their process for goal setting. Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we will look forward to approving these school plans, school safety plans at the next board meeting. Am I correct, Dr. Wagonick? Yes, I want a clarification with, with you on that. Do you want these to come back on action or consent? I am personally fine with consent. We've had a chance to look at each and every one of them and ask questions about them. Board members, any dissent on that?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you again, Dr. Wagonick. And we're now moving on to operationalizing the LCAP, am I right? Yes, LCAP. Operationalizing Equity, the LCAP 2021 to 24. Ms. Laurie Os Horton, please.
Good evening again, Board President Ford, Board members and Superintendent Maldonado. Today, we bring to you an overview of our Local Control Accountability Plans, Process and Development. A reminder that the LCAP is a three-year plan that sets goals, actions and services, as well as expenditures in support of positive student outcomes for all students, but especially for students who are emergent multilingual learners or English learners, socioeconomically disadvantaged students and foster youth. The LCAP provides an opportunity for districts to share their stories of how, what and why programs and services are selected to meet their local needs. And please advance, thank you. The LCAP is intended to put in practice what is known as the California Way. The premise that when properly supported, districts can adopt a plan that is responsive to staff, students and their families' needs. Next slide, please. The Local Control Funding Formula, established almost eight years ago, requires that districts allocate funding based on the number of socioeconomically disadvantaged English learner and foster youth students, more formally referred to as unduplicated pupils. As part of the LCFF requirements, districts must adopt and annually update a local control accountability plan. This next LCAP cycle serves as an opportunity for our district to put into practice the key elements of the Equity Resolution approved at our previous board meeting. We are committed to ensuring that the goals, actions and services are informed by our staff, community and families and connected to improved student outcomes. Next slide. Our LCAP must be developed with these three distinct but related functions. First, meaningful stakeholder engagement, in which we work from a clear understanding that local staff, students and families possess valuable perspectives and insights about our district's programs and services, which should be reflected in the LCAP. This includes using their input to inform goals and actions. With regard to comprehensive strategic planning, we will ensure that budgetary decisions connect to teaching and learning performance data and that as a district, we continually evaluate the difficult choices we make about the use of limited resources to meet student and community needs and ensure opportunities and outcomes are improved for all students. And finally, with regard to accountability and compliance, we understand that the LCAP serves an important accountability function because it requires we demonstrate compliance with various requirements related to goals based on the data and informed by our students, their families and our staff. One new and important requirement is that the LCAPs be written in a way that is accessible and understandable for families. Next slide. Expanding on the ideas from the previous slide, the process of developing the Local Control Accountability Plan must include transparency and engaging stakeholders in analysis and decision-making, providing for an increased level of local flexibility to determine which programs or services have greatest likelihood of ensuring students will succeed. And finally, as we all know, and we often tell our students as they matriculate through our schools, with our freedom comes responsibility, which is the accountability piece. Next slide. A reminder that the LCAP has eight priorities that fit under three areas of focus in order to ensure schools are addressing the needs of the whole child. They include conditions for learning, pupil outcomes and engagement. These eight priorities are by design meant to support schools in creating an environment where all students are safe, engaged, supported, challenged and healthy. In Santa Barbara Unified, these state priorities also live in our belief statements in which all our work is grounded, including that we believe in the need to address the whole child and embracing their cultural and linguistic identity as an asset. We believe in ensuring safe conditions for learning, which are affirming of their multiple identities, personalized and inclusive of positive relationships with parents and families. And finally, we believe in increasing pupil outcomes and engagement through restorative approaches, implementation of systemic MTSS supports, as well as providing all students high levels of instruction and opportunities. Next slide. Next slide. One very important aspect of, aspect of the LCFF requirement is to increase and/or improve services for our low-income English learners and foster youth. To improve means to grow the quality of the service and to increase means to grow by quantity. The increase or improvement of services must be in proportion to the number of unduplicated pupils. And of course, as our concentration of unduplicated pupils increases, so will our allocation of our base funding. Currently, these funds total approximately $11.4 million, which is the amount that is required to use for LCAP. Next slide. The new three-year LCAP template released just this past week by the California Department of Education includes all of these sections listed here on this slide. Next slide. With the release of the template this past week and training for staff recently underway, you can expect a season of intensive LCAP-related actions, including, but not limited to the activities you see listed here. Ongoing communication will accompany these efforts so the public and all staff, families and students can follow and participate in the LCAP development process. The process for the development of the new three-year LCAP for school years 2021 to 2024 will culminate in June with a public hearing, followed by a request for board adoption. Next slide. Specifically to the engagement of staff, students, families and community, you will notice the sequence of activities here on this slide and when we plan to bring this board updates about our progress. And with that concludes our report this evening and we'll take any questions.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Larios Horton. I have one question, and that is, can you, in terms of operationalizing, can you give me specifics about what it looks like for stakeholder engagement? No harm, no foul, but this is one area where most schools and districts really struggle because there's so much educational jargon that's used and an effort to sort of move through things very quickly. Can you give me sort of a best practices of stakeholder engagement?
Well, I think what's really important, President Ford, is that we are really open about which different, the different opportunities and we're we're clear about the different opportunities that exist to provide input. And as you noted earlier, you know, it's a really important part of the development of LCAP is ensuring we have stakeholder engagement, broad stakeholder engagement. And so one example might be to when we have meetings with with stakeholders that we really ensure that we keep the jargon very limited and that we really get at the heart of what it is that we want our families and our other stakeholders to to understand so that they are able to provide the input and not spend so much energy just trying to understand the process. So that's worked really well for us. A quick example would be that, you know, a DLEC Executive Committee might spend extra time really understanding it because if we really want their input, it's really important that they understand before they walk into a stakeholder meeting to give input. Otherwise, the entire meeting is spent just trying to understand and that's not effective. So that's just one example of a practice that we employ so that we get that feedback that we want.
I appreciate that. And before we go to the public comment, can you also clarify what would be the next step, since this is a report?
Yes, so the next step would be to come back to this board in March and be able to report, I believe it's March, to report on our stakeholder engagement. I'm sorry, excuse me, that would be April. So in this next month, we're going to kick off that stakeholder engagement and we would be coming back to this board in April with an update on how that is going. So that's, that would be the next step. Our our Ed Services team, who has been learning alongside me and others about this new template, will be working together to to have stakeholder, to hold stakeholder engagement sessions, to push out a survey and we'll come back again in April and give you an update on how that's going.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Hio, we have a comment.
Correct. We have Moni DeWitt. Mr. DeWitt, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Sorry for the pause there. Yeah, I am very interested in this report, both as a parent of a student in the district and operate organizing around equity and the LCAP. I have two concerns. One is, has the district met the meaningful engagement of both the parents and the public? As a parent, I want to say, I I have a commitment and interest in this topic and not had any except for what I saw on about the program. Sorry, I think my internet sadly is unstable. So I would love to see a list of how I can be on a task force and how other parents and what the opportunities are and actually see that. I have been speaking with public advocates up in San Francisco and they also indicate that community engagement is one of the four, one of the five, I'm sorry, it's the fourth legal requirement for for, sorry, California Public Schools. And the reason why this is so important is basically you have $11.4 million. And I would like to see kind of line item where that money is going because some approaches are more effective than others. And you're basically have to make sure that this group of people who are generating this extra income are getting the need, their needs met in the most effective way. And and I challenge that the district is making assumptions and missing phonemic awareness, which is how these kids will improve. And as a last thought, we can see this because our outcomes are disparity. There's only 12% of our Latinx graduates go on to four-year college where 41% of our white high school graduates go. So I really would like to hear particularly from Ms. Horton, if you could send me that in writing, how I can participate and where the money is being spent. I would really like to know that both as a parent and as someone who was uninvited to an LCAP meeting last spring. So this is both personal and important. Thank you.
That concludes the comment on this item. President Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Hio. And so with that, I will turn it over to board members. Are any, are there any questions or comments, please?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
At your next presentation, Ms. Larios Horton, would you give us a little bit more information on how we are improving and increasing services to unduplicated pupils? I do understand that this unduplicated pupils not, do not necessarily generate any extra funding, being that we're a community-funded school. But as a district, the board has made a commitment to make sure that we are funding services to these students in proportion to our LCFF calculator and how that increases every year, if it increases. But I'd like to have a better understanding of how we are improving and increasing these services, please, at your next presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Yes, hi. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Larios Horton. I appreciate, you know, as always, such a thorough presentation. And I've seen, you know, the the parents and they how engaged they are, how much they own this, you know, in terms of the education of their children, you know, especially the English learners and and our low-income students. So thank you. I I would be interested in learning possibly next time about, you know, improved services for foster youth. If that's, you know, information that's available, that would be great. Thank you.
I I would like to add, if I may, very briefly here, that this new LCAP template affords us an opportunity to do a deep and thorough evaluation of our past LCAP expenditures and services for the past two years. So we may not be able to bring to you in April right away what it is that our evaluation and stakeholder engagement will yield because we are still working through that stakeholder engagement and and evaluation. So I think that's something really important to remember that we we will be generating and developing those goals, actions and services based on the stakeholder input and the evaluation over the past two years. So but I I completely understand the importance to to of this board knowing well ahead of time of what what is, what that engagement is yielding and the analysis is yielding. So I will make note of that and share with our Ed Services team as well.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Larios Horton. We're excited for the next step. And that will take us to our next and final report. And for that, I will turn it over to Ms. Carey and Ms. Escobedo on pandemic learning recovery.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Maldonado, and of course, our entire Santa Barbara family. Always excited to be cleanup batter here, cleanup hitter. We wanted to start today to give you a little presentation on, I know, something that is really of high interest for so many as it is for us as well. And so if we can go to the next slide, please. I want to, I want to remind this all, I'm sure we we haven't forgotten. But in the last few board meetings, we have taken actions to address equity and learning loss for our students through changes in our grading policy and adoption of equity resolutions. Today, we are excited to share with you our very, very early, I want to emphasize, very early planning ideas for our summer, summer learning offerings in these ongoing efforts to support our students and very specifically to address in this pandemic year, the pandemic learning recovery needed. We are committed to ensuring a collaborative process, which is why this is early in the planning phases, so that we can engage our stakeholders before our summer learning recovery plan is finalized TK. I'm happy to say that TK through 12th grade, that's our goal. Our Y is guided by a student-centered learning approach that is focused on offering a multi-tiered systems of support cycle in that being really asking these student-centered questions. What do we want our students to know? How do we engage all our learners? How do we know that students are learning? And then what do we do to respond to the students' needs? We can go to the next slide. Again, the very high level, the all the the five Ws, right, and and our how. In this slide, what you can see is that the how we plan on accomplishing this plan really speaks to the timeline and the process of our actions to, of course, plan, engage, develop and implement. And as you can see on this slide, our planning has gained momentum since January. Not to say that it hadn't been in its early, early planning stage even before that and will continue through June. In that planning, us, part of it, we have analyzed past program offerings and identified new needs as a result of this very unusual year. And then, of course, we want to plan for what students we're identifying and, of course, the staffing needed. In the engagement part of this process, we, which is happening from January through May, this is a collaborative effort that we've already started with our task force, with parent, and we want to include parent input. And then, of course, obviously, including our curriculum leadership groups and our administrators. In the development part, which begins in February already and through May, this will include identifying the needed courses for this summer learning opportunity. And then, of course, finalizing staffing and program details. And then, of course, in the implementation part, that's where we're ending and culminating with the actual rollout of our summer learning for six weeks, proposed right now, June 14th through July 23rd, as I said, for TK 12 and possible, a possible August bridge, which is tradition here in Santa Barbara for students going from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school. And if we go on to our next slide, just a little more detail, very specifically for elementary here, our when, who, what and where. So the possibilities being explored in these areas. Again, as I've already shared, the when proposed is June 14th through July 23rd for six weeks and possibly for half-day sessions. The who, starting by identifying our most vulnerable students, those students who maybe receive those midpoint notices that have already gone home and those students needing support academically and socially. As far as the what, this includes really looking into the content, right? Are we going to be focusing on reading and writing and math, ELD? And or also possibly STEAM and project or problem-based learning so that we can really think outside of the box this time for this opportunity and and really hopefully be engaging some of our most vulnerable students to really come and and take advantage of this opportunity. And then the where, which the where right now is what we're thinking is to include three sites across the district with possibly offering in the other sites, programs through our community partnerships. But that again is still early in the development stages with also the possibility of offering not just in-person small group of course, but also maybe an option of including virtual options as well because we know some of our students have actually thrived on on this virtual platform. So as you can see, we have multiple next steps planned with our focus and our priority being on collaboration and input from our stakeholders as well as providing an innovative and impactful summer learning opportunity. So now, to tell you more about the secondary plans, I will hand it off to my colleague, Ms. Carey.
Thank you, Ms. Escobedo. In the secondary grades, of course, we've traditionally offered summer school, but it's been principally for high school students who needed to recover credits in order to stay on track for graduation. In recent years, we became more keenly focused on the important task of identifying the underlying, the underlying learning needs that accompanied any kind of credit deficiency. And but also for students who may not behind, may not be behind in credits but are somehow otherwise demonstrating that they're not performing at standard. And that's been an area of focus for us for the last two to three years for grades seven through 12. We've also, in the past, excited, been excited to offer robust extended learning opportunities for identified students that include some of that bridge programming that you've seen already. And that supports transitions from sixth to seventh and also from eighth to ninth. You can think of it as kind of a running start for junior high, a running start for high school. It also can help us close any learning gaps that we might be able to identify. And in some cases, we're able to provide enrichment and even dual enrollment credit through partnership with Santa Barbara City College. So taking all of that in and understanding that this year, in light of all that we've experienced with the pandemic, we'll be expanding and continuing to evolve our summer programming to include some of the things that you see here on this slide. Possible opportunities for career technical education, opportunities to think not just about credit recovery and learning recovery, but what we're calling credit and learning repair. So rather than taking a full course all over again, if you've just, again, missed key learning standards, how to identify and remediate those key learnings. And as exciting as those, these potential opportunities are here, if you'll go to the next slide, I want to reiterate that our clear prioritized focus will be on the students with most need. And as we think about need, we think about need, and this is TK 12, being those students who most need to have their learning loss addressed. The ultimate goal is college career readiness, not just for secondary students, but that's a TK 12 enterprise to achieve college and career readiness. And so our summer programming can help us with continuity of instruction. But also, and again, particularly in light of the pandemic, to focus on social, emotional learning and recovery as well. We know and we've been hearing about the the refrain of just what our students and particularly our most vulnerable students have experienced in their time away from our school campuses. So as you saw on the timeline slide, we have, we have, this is an initial report and we have more detailed planning to undertake. But we do want to make sure that you know that we've already been engaging our principals, our curriculum leaders and our teachers through our Superintendent Teacher Advisory Group as well as our labor partners in their input about what the design and scope of our summer learning for this summer will be and and uniquely how it will be expanded and evolved to be responsive to the experience of the pandemic. With that, Ms. Escobedo and I are here to answer any questions you might have at this stage.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hio, is there a speaker or more, one or more speakers for this item?
President Ford, yes, we have one speaker for this item, Moni DeWitt.
Thank you. Yeah, so that is an interesting report, but I would really, I have a concern. It wasn't very specific, the design and scope. It was very general. And my concern is, is that there are going to be quite a lot of people with high needs. And how many are you willing to help? You know, because I know already one in five is way behind from before COVID, you know? And so it could be, it could be easily 5,000 students, just as a rough estimate from the CAPS score. So that's a question. And also, the what? I think for some of those students, they're going to need the appropriate intervention, at least on the language element. And it should be specific to meet their needs in the most effective way. We don't want to be wasting their time. And the district currently does still cling to balanced literacy, which even Lucy Cox district currently does still cling to balanced literacy, which even Lucy Calkins says isn't the best. And you'll see, if you go to the National Reading Panel, there are five things, and they're all really related around phonemic awareness and a lot of repetition and practice. So I would like to see specifically which programs you're using. I mean, just as both a parent and concerned for my community, because people who can't read by the end of the third grade, don't, don't do, and they don't get to go to a four-year college, and there's your error. And I know you've power of literacy and how it's really interwoven. I want to be able to trust that you're going to give them the right thing that they need to get their needs met. And right now, I'm not seeing any specifics, and it's deeply troubling. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Ford concludes the public comment for this evening.
Thank you very much. So now I'll move to board members with questions or comments, please.
I have a comment, please.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. It's, what day is it, February? And we're talking about this now, and that all of the thinking that's gone into it. Again, I've stated this before, but I just am fully behind the promise of summer school. I was happy to read a New York Times article about the Biden administration also sharing that support to the tune of a proposal of $29 billion, that, of course, we hope trickles its way to us. So I just wanted to emphasize the, what you're already doing, the community engagement piece, because I'm remembering about this time last year, maybe more about end of March, when a lot of discussions started happening with so many nonprofits and museums of how can we help? And I know, again, I'm repeating myself, but I think it's so important for you all to not shoulder this all yourselves. But, and I'm not going to sit here as a board member to say how to do it, but I just to encourage you and give support that I can, whether it be fiscally, voting here, or however I can to, you know, lean on our community partners, because I agree with our speaker. I think that the demand is going to be very high, and we have had summer school in the past, but it's been, as, as indicated in this report, you know, very specifically targeted, right? So I just think that I, I'm hopeful that actually our demand is really high, and I encourage you to start now, as you've indicated you are, to lean on others, retired principals to come in and organize, community partners, nonprofits, museums that are anxious to get people back in, or whatever it might be. Again, understanding that that takes capacity, and I'm willing to support with my votes or with my roll-up-my-sleeves type of work to help you with this, because I think that summer school is going to be such a critical piece when we look back on this pandemic, two years from now, three years from now, to recover some of the learning loss that are, we know our children are experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for starting this planning so early. I am so grateful that you're all doing this. It is so, so important. I also know that Governor Newsom had talked about, including in his budget, additional support for districts specifically for programs such as this one. So I'm very hopeful that, that will come through, and we will get additional funds for, for this program. My goal is not to turn anybody away. I do agree, and I suspect that the demand is going to be very high, and I want us to be prepared. I know it's hard to recruit people, but it is February, and I know that Mr. Beckio is probably already on his list to start talking to people, see who's interested in working summer school and doing that recruitment very, very early. So I look forward to that report next week. And thank you, Ms. Escobedo. Thank you, Ms. Carrie, and everyone else who's working in this program. I think it's going to be very successful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Munoz, please.
Yes, I agree with Ms. Capes and Ms. Alvarez, and certainly appreciate the report and the emphasis on summer for our students, especially this year with the learning loss and the need for, for the students to be around each other and learning together and such. I also, I agree with Ms. Alvarez of not turning any students away and doing what we can, you know, thinking now, I have been in conversations with community partners already, kind of, you know, we're looking at, okay, the summer embracing for that. So I know that folks are interested. And when I talk with them, I will also can certainly recruit and spread the word, so that we have enough support for the summer. And thank you, Ms. Escobedo and Ms. Carrie. Thank you.
Thanks. Great ideas, great support. Thank you, Ms. Carrie and Ms. Escobedo. And I know that Superintendent Maldonado has been leading this charge too. So thank you so much. I just really have one comment, and that is that this has been a very tough year, and it has been especially tough for the kids who are struggling. They are tired, they're discouraged, likely they are lacking confidence and motivation. So I just ask you to please consider creating a program that emphasizes engagement, project-based learning, experiential learning, to Ms. Capes' point, because more than ever, this is not the summer to do any kind of program that would be just skill and drill, lots of worksheets, and lots of reminders to the kids of how far behind they are, even to the point that I would ask you to try to make it fun.
Absolutely. That's the goal, that's the goal, for sure.
Thank you so much. And if there are no further comments, then I'd like to turn ourselves to the, to item I, which is coming events. Board members, you've probably already looked at the list of coming events. Are there any other items and coming events that you need to add?
I don't want to add anything. I'd just like to suggest that items like summer school be moved up on the agenda, instead of being the last, maybe could be some of the first, and maybe have the consent at the end, so that we have more participation and more parents are aware of what we're talking about. So perhaps we can move discussions about LCAP, about summer program, on top of the agenda.
Well, thank you for your idea about agendas. Any coming events that anyone would like to talk about or add? Yes?
I just, yes, to, you know, the 58 participants that are here and to all of you that are in the Zoom, just a reminder about the COVID town vaccine town hall that's happening this Thursday night from 6:00 to 7:00, you know, help us spread the word. Thank you.
Excellent. Let's go on to letter J, future agenda items. I, again, want to thank Ms. Maldonado and Mr. Hill for working closely with me to, to try to space these out, especially for the next board meeting and for our only one and only board meeting in March. And so I know you've looked through these. Are there any additions that you'd like to have us consider? Seeing none, then we shall move on to letter K, which is adjournment. And Ms. Maldonado, do you have any final thoughts?
Yes, and I'd like to go back really quick to J. I'd like to have us at LCAP in April and June, as Ms. Larios Horton mentioned tonight. That would be the only addition to J. I just want to close with saying that I really want to thank the executive cabinet, our principals, our teachers, our food service workers, our maintenance workers, and all the other people behind the scenes. I know that the next couple of weeks are going to be really busy for all of us, and I want to acknowledge that work ahead of time. But I also want to, and I want to ask our public and our supporters, our parents, to please extend some grace and compassion for those, those people who also are going to be preparing to shift back into school mode and maybe experiencing some fear and some feelings of, you know, difficulty with change. But know that with all that, we are confident that we will do a, a more than excellent job with welcoming back our children into our school sites. Thank you so much.
I appreciate that so much. Love and compassion, and Valentine's Day is coming up. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is going to be held on Tuesday, February 23, at 6:30 PM, and it will be, hopefully, in person, but we'll keep you appraised of that, just to make sure that we have everything in place. So as we adjourn tonight, I want to thank everyone who, throughout this meeting, which started with hundreds, and especially to those of you who are still with us, who kept in mind my, my earnest request to remember our role as role models of words and deeds. And I think of the words of UCLA coach John Wooden and of activist Rosa Parks in these, at these times. Wooden said, "Being a role model is the most powerful form of educating." And Rosa Parks said, "Each person must live their life as a model for others." And we can do that in our board meetings, too. So with that, good evening. This meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board is adjourned. Thanks.